Good morning.
Good morning.
I will call to order the May 21st, 2013 State Board of Education meeting and we will start our meeting as we always do with the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it's our pleasure to be at the Champlain Valley Union High School. We pride ourselves in getting around the state and holding our meetings in different locations. This meeting here is somewhat brought about by the fact that we're going to be losing one of our distinguished board members in the near future and we're sorry to hear that, but we know that it was a short-term position and we certainly wish her well and her collegiate career. With that great introduction, Laura, do you have something you'd like to say to us?
Sure. Welcome, everyone, to CVU. It's been a great honor and a great pleasure to serve on this board, so I'm really excited for all of you to see my school and see what the past four years for me have been like here, and thank you all for coming.
Thank you, and thanks for your two years of service. Sean, as principal, would you like to say a few words? I think you can take a...I want to make sure you're on the TV, so...
Well, I'd just like-
This is Sean McMahon, the principal of the high school.
I'd just like to welcome the board to CVU, and it's a pleasure to host you, and thank you for including students in the State Board of Education. And one of my advisees, Matt Francis, was on the board previously, and now to have Laura on the board. And it's really, really important to have that student voice as a significant component of the process at the state level, so that we keep the focus on students and also students get to learn about how these important decisions are made at this level and through policy. And I know that Laura, in talking with her, she's learned a great deal about how education works at the state level, and we'll take that with her into her future. Secondly, I know that you're going to be seeing some grad challenge presentations, and I really encourage the board to think about this as an example of proficiency-based education and what proficiency and standards-based education can look like across the state, because I know that's a very important issue that we've been talking about at all levels. And this is a great example that's been in place at CVU for over 15 years of how students are given a loose but standards-based structure with choice to demonstrate their skills. And when students are given that loose but defined structure, they do amazing things, as you'll hear today. And so I think as educators and policymakers, us having the courage to allow students to make those choices and show us what they can do is a really important part of learning as we move into the future. And lastly, I'd encourage you to get around the school and check out. We feel like we have the best facility in the state, and we got the greatest students on earth and an outstanding faculty, supported by an incredible community. And so I'd really encourage you to get out, if you have time, and go around and experience that firsthand. Thank you for being here.
Well, and thank you for hosting us. Before we go around the table here and introduce ourselves, I want to remind people that there is a sign-up sheet, which is on the table back to my right. If you haven't signed up, please, please sign in, or you're going to be dealing with Carol King. Just so everyone knows who's here, we're going to go around the table and introduce ourselves as board members. My name is Stephen Morris. I'm the chair of the State Board of Education, and I come from southern Vermont, a little town called Newfoundland.
Lachlan Francis Putney.
Laura Harris Williston.
Sean Marie Holder Bennington.
Bill Mathis Goshen.
Margaret McLean Peaches.
Kristy Hulane Jeffersonville.
Karen Middlebury.
Stacy Weinberger Burlington.
Armando Villasek, Secretary of Education. I'm sorry I'm late, I just came from AP Government Class, talking to them.
Terrific. Are there announcements from board members? Bill?
Couple of things. Since last meeting, I got a chance to go to the American Education Research Association meeting in San Francisco, and Ernie Duncan was there. And it was a very interesting kind of reception he received. In fact, I'd say it kind of warm and toasty, in the sense is, if you look at educational researchers, they're a very conservative lot, and they're very cautious about what they would say. But things really took a shift this year, and the research community has basically come to the conclusion, and the Gordon Commission, the Federal Governor's Equity and Excellence Commission, and the National Board for Education Science have all said that, you know, this test-based, top-down accountability system is not working. It's just not achieving what it's supposed to be doing. And Eva Baker, former president, a very well-known psychometrician, was saying, "Ask Ernie Duncan if there would be a moratorium on the test until they've been validated and proven." And some states such as Alabama, California, and Indiana are either in slowdowns or said they're not going to do it. And Duncan's response was, "That's a decision that's best left to the states." I was pleased to see Armando's point about not having high stakes attached, at least till the first year, until we figure out what's going. But this is something in which I think we need to pay particular attention to, and if the tests don't prove themselves, I think we should come back and say, "This isn't working, this is not right for Vermont." That's all to be seen, but the big thing here is this gravitation of the researchers saying that this is not the proper way to run schools. Second thing, also was on a NASB conference call of the Government Affairs Committee, and I'll be on another call later this week, and they were talking some about competitive grants. And again, this is something that is not in Vermont's favor. When you have the Title I Special Education Funds being short-changed by the federal government to put the competitive grants out there to pay for teacher-based, test-based evaluation for teachers and so forth, is a takeaway from what the needs are of the children. And so I spoke against that. The NASB position is against competitive grants, and it's going to stay that way, as I understand it, but I had a little bit of a disagreement with some of the folks who, in larger states, who like to write grants, who prefer the competitive grants be a procedure. Also, in this line, and I don't know what's going to happen here, is that there's expected to be some kind of congressional action on No Child Left Behind, the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, this summer. Take your pick. There's a House Democratic version, there's a House Republican version, there's a Senate Republican version, and a Senate Democratic version. And I have no earthly idea what's going to sugar off from all of that, if anything, given the paralysis-
That would seem to be the big point with this Congress, "if anything."
I would think that may be operative, and Armando may know something from his sources that would give him some indication of which way that's going to go. But right now, I'll be talking with those people Friday, and we'll be probably visiting with them later, but at this point, it's going to be a very interesting kind of session.
Are there other comments or announcements from board members? Bill?
A number of us will probably be going to VSA meeting this coming Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
Yes. I plan to go on Friday. I don't know that I responded, but I'm responding now if anyone's listening out there.
I'm going Thursday.
And Lachlan, you might tell us what you're doing there.
On Friday, I and Harry Frank and some other students from around the state will be presenting from 12 to 1, I believe. And some people who are involved with YATS, Youth and Adults Transforming Schools Together, will be part of that panel as well.
Are there other announcements from board members? Not? Are there members of the public that wish to be heard? Not seeing anyone. Laura, we'll move...we're a little bit ahead of schedule. Do you want us to-
Yeah, I think people should be here in a few minutes. Is there anything quick we can do before that?
Your report? All right, then, while we're...yes. While we're waiting for the students to come in, because we're running ahead of schedule, I'm going to call on the secretary to give his report, which is Item L on the back of the page. Mr. Secretary.
Thank you, Stephen. And I'll be quick, and whenever those kids...if anybody comes in, Laura, just let me know and I'll stop. First of all, I want to congratulate Laura and thank her for her work for the last two years, and it's nice that you didn't have to travel today and that we're able to come to your place and share with us this beautiful school and some of the things that, you know, the grad challenge, so the board gets to see what some of the capstone projects look like. And there are other schools in the state that do the same thing, so thank you, Laura. I will also be at the VSA Vermont Special Ed Coordinators Meeting on Friday. Thursday, I will be flying to and back from Chicago on the same day, around an S-Back meeting, the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium. And what we're trying to do is come up with a way of only testing kids once, because remember, we're a fall testing state. The new S-Back assessment or the new...the two assessment consortia will be testing in the spring. We've already made a decision that we will not be testing a year from this coming fall. So the fall of 2014, we will not be testing. Our last year of kneecap testing will be next fall. We don't miss a year, because we're still testing the kids in the same year, but we're going to wait till the spring. We don't feel that there's a need to test kids on standards that are no longer being used, and then we would have two accountability systems, so we're only going to test the one in the spring of 2015. However, the other piece that John and I and actually others are working on is, next year, we have to...there has to be a pilot for the new S-Back assessment. And that's 60% of the kids in the 24 states that are using this assessment have to be assessed. What we're proposing is that if those 60% get assessed, only 40%, the remaining 40% are given the kneecap next fall. I don't want kids...I don't want schools taking so much time out of the day to test both. The question that becomes, as Bill alluded to earlier, is the accountability. If we're still using state assessments, the accountability, how does that work? What we're proposing is that we use the 40%. If we have to...I mean, we're already...NCLB has reached its pretty much limit. We will be, as many other states are, at that level where, you know, 80-some-odd percent of our schools are not meeting the standards. So we don't see that as in any way reflective of what's really going on in schools, if we can test one group and have that 40% meet the accountability. The other option is to use the fall of 2013 as the accountability year and test 40 and 60, but not use that towards accountability. The challenge will be, and Bill alluded to it, and I...we met, and I have a letter going to the secretary, that it's okay to, in 2015, to use the new S-Back assessment, or CAP, or PARK in other states, but not to use it for accountability. We're having kids take an assessment on standards that have not been introduced yet, or are just barely introduced. So what we're hoping, what I'm hoping, which is not the case from other school chiefs from around the country, and if anybody gets any emails or on the mailing list from a group called Chiefs for Change, it's part of Jeb Bush's Excellence in Education Consortium, and there are six or seven commissions of education who are saying, "No, count this new test for accountability, hold states accountable, even though the standards have not been introduced." We, and John and I, had a conversation recently with folks, with all the commissions around the state, and we brought this up, because if you...Randy Weingarten, if you're familiar with her, she's the president of the AFT, and she came out with a position saying, "Still give the assessments, but don't use them this first year for accountability." It was her words were misrepresented, I believe, that there should be no assessment and no accountability. Still give the assessments, but don't hold kids accountable for standards that have not been introduced yet. When I brought this up, it was after all these other chiefs. It was interesting, because they said, "Okay, all the chiefs are here, and then we're going to start in alphabetical order backwards." Well, Vermont didn't go first. Ohio went first, Rhode Island went first. It's like, what? The guy didn't go through the kneecap standards. He doesn't understand how the alphabet works. But they all said, "Hold kids accountable for these new standards." So I come up and say, "I disagree with that." I think that...and John and I had Randy Weingarten's position paper in front of us and said, "That's not what she's saying. What she's saying is, 'Hold the assessments, because we need to do that, but don't tie high stakes to it.'" After I said that, California came up and said, "We agree with Vermont." I think South Dakota said the same thing. There were a couple of other states that maybe will have a little bit of impact. Michael Hawke, my assessment director, is drafting a letter for me that we will be sending to Ernie Duncan that will outline that. You'll get a copy of that letter first. Again, what we...I believe that we have high standards. I believe that we should have our state assessment be part of a total accountability for a state, not one measure, but to assess kids and then hold schools, teachers, and states accountable is wrong. I don't know how else to say it. And I know that Governor Shumlin is very supportive of less testing and using more ways of accountability, state assessments, student scores, graduation rates, attendance rates, all the different ways that we know that a student or a school is doing well or struggling, using multiple measures. I don't have a whole lot of...so what I'm looking for? Hope, I guess, right now, that that will happen, but we will be in touch with Senator Sanders' office, who's on the Help Committee, and others, to see if there's enough common sense to allow for the accountability not to start maybe until 2016 as opposed to 2015. I'll stop there, because I see some people came in, and I'll just-
Is everyone here now, Laura?
Yeah.
Okay. We may come back to you. I'd be curious to know Bill's comment that he knew of four different bills on No Child Left Behind, how this might weigh in-
We can talk about that later, yes.
Okay. Laura, I'm counting on you doing the introductions.
Okay.
What are we doing?
I can't sit next to her.
I always found that don't go to the office first.
I'll be standing in my firm.
Want me to turn the lights on?
Sure, yeah.
Scott, do you want them up there?
You okay? Can you give me the back and keep it off the screen?
Let me just...yeah, I can figure it out.
Ezra?
And today, we're going to tell you a little bit about Grad Challenge. And so Grad Challenge is a requirement for graduation here at CVU. It's an independent senior project. And so at the end of your junior year, you choose something that you're interested in, but that's also going to be new learning to you. And you come up with a contract for how many hours you'll work on the project, if there's something tangible that's going to come out of it, and what length paper you're going to write. And then, over the summer and throughout the year, you work towards completing these requirements. And at the end of the year, on this Friday, we have community presentations. And throughout the year, you work closely with a community consultant, who is someone from outside the CVU building, not a family member, basically someone new. And they help guide...they're an expert in the field, and they help guide you through. So today, the three of us are going to tell you about our presentations, and then we'll take some questions from you guys about our specific projects or the general program. Emmett's going to start.
Does the screen even be used?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do we have to lighten it till we see the screen? Oh, there it is.
Now, no lights?
Yes.
It's in the chairman's job description to be the light.
Laura, do we need to pull the screen down?
Are you doing this?
Uh, sure. If we can't pull it down.
Can you sit on that thing?
Yep.
It's a podium.
Okay. So I'm Emmett Peterson, and as you can see here, my greatest passion has always been for canoes. My very first canoe trip, I was three months old, and my favorite play toy as a kid was always my canoes. So when it came time to choose a grad challenge topic, I thought a lot about my personal experiences with canoes, and that had a lot to do with a canoe tripping camp, that I went to, called Camp Pathfinder. And at Camp Pathfinder, we use very unique canoes called cedar canvas canoes, as you can see in this picture. And they're all made of wood, and it's a wooden structure covered with canvas and painted. And so when it came time to choose my project, I decided to build a cedar canvas canoe. And it was an amazing process. I was working in the shop for about 150-plus hours, and then, once my canoe was completed, I did a research paper on the history of cedar canvas canoes and evolution of building and so forth. And so that was my project, the hours working on the canoe. Therefore, I wrote the...my option was to write the smallest paper length, which was six-plus pages, but my paper turned out being 12 pages, because I really am passionate about it. So if you go to the next slide, this was my final project that I spent building this whole year. And holding it up for me right there is my dad, and he spent a lot of time working on it with me in the shop, but my actual community consultant was a local builder in Underhill named John Connell, and he helped me whenever I had problems with any woodworking or anything. And he was a great help. I interviewed him for my paper as well, and he knew a lot of the history and helped me get in contact with other builders in the area. And yeah, it was a great experience, and there's one more picture of me with it on my shoulders for the first time. And the most special part of this project for me is that, now that the boat is done, this summer is the 100th season for Camp Pathfinder that I was talking about at the beginning. So I'm going to be auctioning it off, the canoe, at the 100th reunion in August this year. And all the money from the canoe raises is going to the Algonquin Campership Fund, which funds kids to go to camps such as Pathfinder, which they would otherwise not be able to go to, because they're very expensive camps. And yeah, so that's my project.
This PowerPoint is for my presentation on Friday, so there's some extra fluff, but I'll just...
Fluff?
No. But we can just skip through that. So for my graduation challenge, I helped...yeah, you can just skip to the first picture. Yeah, that's fine. Okay, so for my back one, thanks. So for my project, I helped Sleepy Hollow, which is a ski...a Nordic ski in Huntington and Heinsburg, install snowmaking. The reason I did this was for two reasons. First, I'm on the CVU Nordic team. I'm in there somewhere. Emmett's in there somewhere. And I started Nordic skiing when I was a sophomore, and I fell in love with the sport. I'm a soccer player, that's like my main sport, but once I started Nordic skiing, I absolutely fell in love with it, and it's become a passion. And our practice area, or where we go to practice every day, is Sleepy Hollow. So Eli Edmund, who owns the in, is also one of our coaches, so I had a strong relationship with him, and I knew that it would be a great experience to work with him installing the snowmaking, so I can help out the team and help out him. The second reason I wanted to do this project is I took a class here, Environmental Perspectives of Vermont, and that was my first semester of my junior year. And that focused on the...it was a social studies and science class, and it focused on the history and environmental science in our area, specifically in Heinsburg. So that was a really interesting class, and I really, really enjoyed that subject. And in this class, I was taught...or I learned about Act 250, which, for snowmaking, is very important. So if you can go to the next slide, that's just shows a picture of our Act 250 plan. And so my project, I like to break it down into three parts. One was the planning, which took place over the summer. The second was the construction, and the third was the maintenance of the snowgun during the entire winter season when we were blowing snow. So I helped out a little bit with the planning. Eli Edmund had to fill out all the permitting, Act 250, got that approved. The second step, if you can go to the next slide, please, was...that's just a map of Sleepy Hollow. You can go to the next one. Just some construction, and I helped out with that. I got to using an excavator, which I thought was awesome, because I had never used that before, and Eli had full confidence in me, which was scary, because, again, had no idea what to do. You can go to the next one. And then many of my hours...oh, yep, that's me in the excavator. And then many of my hours came with maintaining the snowgun and making sure that it was blowing in the right places and not, you know, letting the wind take it into the trees or burying the snowgun. So it was...you can keep going, there's some cool pictures. Next one. That one's really nice, I like that. So I think Grad Challenge was a great experience, you can just stay right here. This year, the Nordic team, the girls and guys, won the state championship. I was very proud to be part of that team. Emmett was a key part to that state championship. But Grad Challenge was a great experience, because I got to help out Sleepy Hollow, which is a great, great family-owned place or ski resort, and I also got to see the benefit from the team and explore my interests, which are Nordic skiing and environmental studies.
Where did you get the guns?
We bought them online from HKD Snowmaking. So you can buy literally all of it online, and it comes, and you have to install it, or you can hire a company to install it for you.
So for my Grad Challenge, I studied Hindi and Indian culture. I know I've talked to some of you about this project. And so I spent seven weeks this summer in Pune, India, which is about halfway down the west coast, in a little bit, near Mumbai. And so I was in India through a program called the National Security Language Initiative for Youth. And basically what they do, it's a program through the State Department, and they give merit-based scholarships to high school students to study abroad in seven different critical languages. And the critical language has been classified by the Department of State as vitally important for future American diplomacy and security, but it's not being widely taught. So there's really a need for these languages, but no one's really learning them. And so when I found out about the program, I was looking at it, I saw that learning Hindi in India was one of the options. I've always been really interested in India and dreamed about going there, so I immediately knew that I wanted to apply, and I was lucky enough to get accepted. So I spent seven weeks in Pune. You can go through the next slide. So while I was there, my main activity was attending school. This is our classroom. And we were in an Indian high school every day from 7:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And we had Hindi class from 7:30 to 1:00, quick break for lunch, and then cultural classes in the afternoon. So it was things like Bollywood, dance, yoga, art. So that was fun. The Hindi part was pretty grueling, but the teachers are really nice. Indian school is a lot different from American school, a lot more strict, but they kind of modified some of the rules for us to make it a little more easygoing. And so Hindi is written in Devnagri script, so it has an alphabet. It was a steep learning curve to learn the alphabet, but once you know it, you can read any word phonetically. If you want to go to the next slide, I'll teach you guys to say a sentence in Hindi. Hello, my name is Laura. So namaste, some of you probably know that word like from yoga class. And traditionally, you say it with your hands like this and you bow, especially if it's to a person that's older than you. And then meranam, Laura hai, means my name Laura is. So in Hindi sentence structure, the verb comes at the end. So I'll say it once and you guys can try saying it with your name instead of my name. Namaste, meranam, Laura hai. Yes, good. On your way.
Nice job.
So you can go to the next slide. While I was there, I was living with a host family. And family is by far the most important part of Indian culture. So this is the Joglakar family. So my sisters, Aishwarya and Ananya, they're 19 and 15. And my parents, their names are Shubhila and Abhay, but I call them Ayeen Baba, which means mom and dad in the local language. And they were a great family to live with, I felt at home immediately. They're also really great, they would talk to me about really anything in Indian culture. So I could kind of ask them about more controversial things. And so I think this gave me a much deeper and fuller view of Indian culture than if I just like stayed in the hotel. And I've stayed in touch with them since I returned to the U.S. And they're great. I really hope to go back and see them again someday. And so after I came back to the U.S. in August, I continued on my study of Hindi with my community consultant, Bhagwat Mongla. And he's a native Hindi speaker from New Delhi, but now he lives in South Burlington and works for IBM. So about once a month, I go to Mr. Mongla's house and I've continued to study with like teach yourself books and things like that. And so if I have questions, he'll answer them. You know, we'll talk about India and different, and even other things. And his wife sometimes will make food for us. They've invited me over to watch Hindi movies with them too. And so that's been a really great relationship that definitely I would not have had if I didn't continue on with this as my Grad Challenge. And so, yeah, he was great also through the whole process of writing my paper. He read over a few drafts, made sure I had my facts straight. And so that's been a really special relationship that formed through this project. And I hope to continue studying Hindi throughout my life, definitely go back to India. I'm pretty interested in possibly working for the Foreign Service after college. And knowing a critical language can really give you a leg up in the process. So Grad Challenge definitely helped me jumpstart my learning of Hindi. So if anyone has questions about our projects or program in general?
So how is your, is it okay to just ask?
Yes.
How is your project assessed?
Well, we have, we write a research paper and that is assessed by a panel of teachers. And if you don't pass the first time, there's a second reading. And then on Friday, we have our presentations and those are assessed by a panel of community members. And if we don't pass that, then again, there's a second chance. And so it's a, it's like a scale from does not meet the standard to exceeds the standard. And there are standards in different areas like, like, I'm trying to think of some examples. I guess like use of media and things like that.
So there's a rubric for assessing the written project, but also for the presentation?
Sean Marie.
What would you say were the differences when you said they were different from American schools? When they said they modified it, how did they modify it for you?
Well, let's see, we were allowed to eat snacks in class. We had to lobby hard for that one. They were, first they weren't going to allow us. We were allowed to talk in the hallways, which other students weren't. Still wouldn't let us chew gum in class. We still had to bow to our teacher when they walked into the room. Yeah, it was, it was a pretty different atmosphere from what I was used to.
And what were the class sizes like?
Well, our group was only 20 students, so we had a small class. But actual Indian like classes would have up to like 40 students in a class. Thank you.
Stacy?
First of all, I'm so moved by all three of you clearly so passionate and engaged in your learning. And I'm so impressed that this is happening in Vermont schools. Well, I'm wondering, I can, maybe for all three of you, it was easy to figure out what you were passionate about and excited about. I'm wondering if there were peers of yours, or if you had the experience of not knowing how to tap into what you're passionate about, knowing that maybe as schools progress, we don't often ask students through junior high or elementary, what are you interested in? What do you want to learn? So I guess I'm wondering what supports were there in maybe freshman year, sophomore year, junior year to help you get to a place where you could figure out how do I, how do I come up with a year-long project on my own interest?
Well, I wouldn't necessarily say in freshman or sophomore year, we'd start thinking about Grad Challenge at all. But definitely during the junior year, you have the option of working, starting at the end of your junior year and working through the summer, or starting at the beginning of your senior year. So just because of time and people's schedule, for me, it makes sense to start in the summer just so you can get some hours done when you're a little bit more available. So during the end of the junior year, there's a lot of conversation. I mean, I had a conversation with some juniors yesterday who were trying to figure something out, try to get some ideas. And what I think is really great is, one, juniors are expected to be here at presentation day and they take part in like facilitating the presentations and things like that. So they get to see a lot of ideas. There's also a tangible product fair, so everyone who made a tangible product, was that Thursday?
Yep.
It'll be in the library and you can walk around and get to see everyone's ideas, talk to the kids. So I think there's, by just seeing the class above you, even if you're not going to do what they do, it gives you a good idea of where to start or, oh, I like to do this too. How could I branch out and make my own project?
And also, the advisors are a huge support system in that. And all juniors have access to many, many years back of what previous seniors have done and that always helps them cultivate ideas.
Mark?
Yeah, my question's along the same lines. How many, how many years have you been doing this here at CVU? And what kind of buy-in are you getting from the full student base? And how did the parents buy into this and sort of the base culture of doing this? Because it seems like a huge commitment. And I know you can pick different levels, it sounds like you can pick different levels. And so somebody answers some of those questions if possible.
I don't know how many years.
For a while.
Like when my siblings went here like 10 years ago.
Quite a while.
Yeah.
Principal mentioned it in his opening.
Fifteen, we're hearing from the back.
Yeah, I think, I mean, there are definitely times like before your papers due or the presentation day when people kind of be grumbling like, oh, Grad Challenge, like why do you have to do that? But I think overall, people are pretty, like it's pretty exciting. And at the end, I think it's something that, especially on presentation day, you can really look back at the year and feel really proud of all that you've done. So I think in general, there's a lot of student buy-in and parents seem to be really supportive of it.
I think it's a really big project that you get out what you put in. And I feel like the vast majority of the students put in a ton of work and are very proud of what comes out. And it turns out to be a great experience.
Ezra, I want to tell you a quick story. We should have met sooner because I could have helped you out. In a prior life, I worked at a place called the Wyndham Foundation, which owned Grafton Ponds, Cross Country Ski Center, the second ski center in Vermont that had snowmaking. And how we ended up with snowmaking is that one year, we had a major international event scheduled for early December. At a regular old cross-country ski area, no snowmaking, and there was not a drop of snow on the ground. So we borrowed snowmaking guns from Mount Snow, made a big pile of snow. And then somebody said, ugh, how are we going to get this snow around on a trail? So here's my tip. And it wasn't my idea, it was one of my staff members said, a manure spreader. Literally loaded the snow in the manure spreader and created a trail around these big fields.
Was it a manure spreader?
And what kind of wax do you use with manure?
So I could have helped you out, I'm sure.
Yeah. Thankfully, we had a small, small gun and we would just blow relatively small piles in terms of snowmaking. And Sleepy Hollow has a cat, a snowcat, so.
We were a little grooming out.
Yeah, so we were a little grooming out.
I still have a question about finances. So if students aren't in a position, because it sounded like you had to take on some outside costs, are there grants for students to do that? Are they expected to raise money their own? Or how does that work for students with different economic backgrounds?
Like my thing was completely free.
So your trip was, okay.
And I think it depends a lot on what you pick.
Yeah, I think what we've seen lately, I have older siblings and I don't think this was as much of a, not an issue, but as much of a, people weren't going away necessarily to do their Grad Challenge as much. So I think just be, I don't know if it's because of finances or because of people wanting to seek extremely new learning. I think now more people who have the opportunity are taking, taking it to go elsewhere. Because a couple of people have gone to, where's the 52 kids?
Uganda.
Uganda. So I think it, I, there aren't grants, but I think there's plenty of opportunities here to have a Grad Challenge and not spend any money. But people who have the funds, it's also, I think, is a great experience if you can to go to a different country.
Yes, Mark.
Do you get credit for this? Is it on your transcript? How does that all work?
It's half a credit that's required for graduation.
Emmett spoke specifically about working with your dad. I'm wondering if you three felt like your families were more involved in these kind of projects than whatever your senior English or your other classes? If you had more family connection?
Yeah, I'd say definitely. My, I mean, my parents weren't in India with me. But definitely like, you know, they've, they've met Mr. Mongla and like been to his house and they love to hear about my advisory. They love to hear about my experiences there. It's been, at least for my family.
Yeah, and like I said, I worked a lot with my dad. But one of the aspects of Grad Challenge is that your, your community consultant cannot be a parent or sibling or anyone in the building either. So I did spend a lot of time working with my dad on the project, but my community consultant was a huge part in the process. But yeah, my family was very supportive and it was a lot of fun.
Just because of the nature of my project, I don't, my parents were definitely supportive of my project and they came to my Nordic ski races. But I just, because it was 35 minutes away from my house, Eli was a great mentor and community consultant. It wasn't really needed necessarily.
Sean Marie.
Can you tell me about the process that leads up to it? Do you have to actually apply to your advisor or to the principal and how, how you present what you're, what you're going to do?
You write something called a letter of intent. So they have kind of like an outline, like the different pieces of your project that you can do. And you decide which of those are going to work for you. And you write this letter to your advisor, you know, saying how this is new learning for me, what I'm going to do, like for my hours, my tangible product and things like that. And if it doesn't quite meet what they're looking for, then you redo it.
And you can either do that at the end of your junior year and you can start doing your hours during the summer, or you can do that in the fall of your senior year and start working in the senior year.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, excuse me, Mark.
Yeah, it sounds like a lot of time management's involved in this. And what kind of support do you get through that? Is that through the advisor routine? And because you, you know, some of you guys are mixing in, you know, extracurricular activities, work, and then some of your personal time as well, so.
Yeah, there are due dates throughout the year, like drafts of your paper and things like that. So then it's, you know, because everyone has the same due date, it's kind of known throughout the school. Like we have this coming up. And my, at least my advisor has been really good about reminding us about that and making sure we're on our way.
Yeah, my advisor's a huge support system. It's great with the dates along the year, but I'd be talking to my advisor about my project like once a week or once every other week and just staying in touch, making sure I was on track.
Has this program been replicated anyplace else in Vermont?
Well, it was started, my advisor, Mr. Greenwald, Joe Greenwald, he, I don't know where he came from, what.
Be careful, you're on film here.
No, he was teaching at another school where they had it. I want to say MMU or Mount Abe. And then he brought it here when he came to teach.
Yes.
Just to follow up, with your advisor, could you talk a little bit more about that relationship? And how many students is that advisor working with? And do you meet together with all the students? And what's the time dedicated towards that?
An advisor is some teacher that you're assigned to beginning your freshman year. So right now is advisory time, so for 15 minutes every day.
It's, how many kids are in advisory?
Mine's like 10.
10, yeah, 10, 12. So a few kids from every grade. So like in my advisory, there are I think four seniors, including me. And so it's someone that's known you all through high school. And usually, kids get pretty close with their advisors. And they help you with really a lot of things all through years. But this is probably the biggest project they'll help you with. Yeah, so it's definitely someone that you know well and they're only working with a few kids.
And there's multiple grades meeting in the advisory? So not a grade, okay.
Armando, are the advisories mandatory right now?
No.
They're no?
No. Most schools have something that we call advisory, they might call it homeroom, they might call it something else. But not every school, we're not mandating advisories and it wasn't part of the fleshy pathways.
Usually anybody that's gone through NEASC lately, that's one of their requirements.
I, NEASC is a separate accreditation that has nothing to do with us. Last time I went through NEASC, it's been a few years now, was, that was not a requirement. But maybe it is now, because they've, they've streamlined it and it's less inputs and more outputs, trying to show more what students are learning as opposed to how many books in the library, how many, you know, all these things that in the past was very much sort of, show us what you have as opposed to show us how kids are doing.
Well, thank you very much. This is very exciting and three, three great projects and we wish you luck with your next phase.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got any more snowmaking questions, just give me a call.
Institutions, entry institutions go through NEASC and that's the piece, just to clarify because we sometimes talk in educational ease. No, that, no, I, no, it's, Sean Marie, it's how we talk. I mean, this is, you know, so I just wanted to explain to folks.
Okay, next on the agenda is the EQS standards, EQS. We're getting to know all you folks very well, but just for the record, would you start by introducing yourselves? And let me preface that by saying that the timeframe is growing short. We expect to be looking at a final version of this at our June meeting. Hopefully, between all the discussions we've had and what we'll have today, the board will be satisfied and this will be a very easy process in June. However, that's, that's to be seen. But I do want to tell you that, in reading through these various drafts, really appreciate all you've done. I mean, it's incredible work and, and I appreciate the fact that you've taken into consideration what's been said here and incorporated most of that. So with that warm welcome, please introduce yourselves and walk us through this latest draft.
My name is Jill Remick. I'm a project manager at the Agency of Education.
Elaine Pinkney, I'm superintendent of the Chittenden South Supervisor Union, which includes CVU High School. So proud to hear the students present their Grad Challenges today.
And a member of our commission with us, Kathy Larson, member of the Education Quality Standards Commission, representing you folks.
And a former member of the State Board of Education. That should be top on your, on your.
On my resume.
On your resume, yes.
I'm now a member of my local school board, I think that has to be top.
Oh, really? I would have thought you would have learned better here.
Just completing someone's term, it's okay.
Jill?
Sure, so thank you very much. That was a really, that's going to be a really tough act to follow, so bear with us. But the hope actually frankly is that a lot of the work that has gone into these revisions to the standards would ideally facilitate and support that exact kind of different learning. So that actually works really well in the order of things. So just for a little background for folks listening, just a reminder, the State Board appointed the Education Quality Standards Commission last year. We have one last meeting before we present our final recommendations to you folks at your June meeting. The commission is made up of teachers, principals, superintendents, folks from the school boards, higher education, the business community, with the goal of really presenting you folks with some really solid recommendations for revisions to your State Board Rule 2100 around school quality standards. And really, in a broad sense, it's about moving away from seat time and simply assigning years or Carnegie units to tasks. And much more about students demonstrating proficiency in different. in different ways, um, about allowing for different pathways of not only demonstrating that learning, but experiential learning, um, exploring the world a little bit. Like I said, the students who just presented, that's a, that's a great example. And, and we will have done our job, the commission will have done their job if, if, if what comes out of this is more of that kind of learning. Um, I'm so excited to see Laura where you are in 10 years. I, like, saving the world. Um, and uh, so we've had, um, once a month we've met as a commission. Um, we've communicated some over email. I've been coming to the board and been joined by different members of the commission over the last few months. Um, so we have one last meeting on May 29th and then we'll be bringing the final recommendations along with a companion report to you folks. Um, the commission would really like to sort of present these standards in accompaniment with a, sort of a statement of purpose, a letter of what the real, the intent and the, um, you know, the thinking behind our thinking in, in the document. Um, we, last week, just to catch you up, we did a couple of webinars just as a commission to go through the draft so that, um, I have some comments that they've made to the draft that you folks received last week. Um, and it'll hopefully inform our conversation today. Um, Armando also hosts a week, uh, monthly, uh, Education Join the Conversation, a public access show. And this month, he hosted the Education Quality Standards Commission work. So it was a half an hour program. We were joined by commission members Annie Howell from the Vermont State Colleges and Peter Evans of Youth and Adults Transforming Schools Together. Um, I thought it went really well. As soon as the recording is ready, I believe Angela sends that out to you folks. It goes up on the agency website, um, and it'll go in the weekly field memo. So I, I hope you guys have a chance to look at that when that comes out. Um, did you folks have anything you wanted to add before I start to dig into the document?
I think, um, just from my perspective, we, I still have on record all of the questions you've asked me in the past, and I think part of our agenda at the next meeting will be to, as we review what we hope is a pretty final draft, to go over and make sure. So I don't have specific answers to present to you on all your questions yet, but I'm hoping some of them are already answered in this newest draft, which is, um, a little cleaner and easier to read, um, thanks to Jill's work, taking all of this input. I mean, when you give us credit, Stephen, it's really Jill who's been creating this document over and over and over again based on all the things that we've been doing.
Well, if Jill had been here alone without the two other commission members, I would have, have said that, but I didn't. Um, I also want to remind the board that once we get this final document next month and once, and assuming we can adopt it at that point, it's still an eight-month process to go through the, the rulemaking process. Maybe we can speed that up a little bit, but it's a very lengthy process. So this is, you know, this is a year in the making and there's at least another eight or nine months on top of what's, what's happened.
And I also wanted to just add that this is one step in the sequence that we've been working on for, well, several years, I think, from the start of my term on the State Board, which was in 2007, we really started talking about some of this. And um, most recently, the State Board heard, well, not most recently, but one of the, one of the, um, important documents and pieces of work that we heard about that relates to this was the superintendent's vision they presented to us, some of us, who obviously we have a lot of new members, but last August. And that's, Elaine had worked on that. And so that's why I'm really been glad that Elaine and some of the other superintendents who worked on that were part of our commission to make sure we were staying true to this cause of moving forward. So that was, that was the, uh, what did you call it, Elaine? The vision, the, this, this welcome to Vermont? Oh, the signpost leading to Vermont, the welcome sign, right? Yeah, thank you. Um, I would just say, you know, thinking back on that work, uh, one of the things, early experiences that we had was, um, looking, reviewing all of the source documents, which included the Vermont Design for Education, which like goes back to the 60s. And 201, the 12 people that worked on the VSA Quality Framework, when they read that document said, wow, this still makes sense today. That is amazing. I hope that this document, 20, 30 years from now, will have that same result, right? That people will re, read it and say, you were forward thinking enough that it still holds true today. I think that, um, being pretty intimately, um, uh, knowledgeable of the current school quality standards, this is a quantum leap, uh, forward in educational quality and in the way it reads. I mean, this reads as a narrative, especially I think Jill, you're probably gonna talk about some of the reordering of it, but I'm proud to be part of this commission.
Thank you.
Thank you for saying that.
Okay, Jill.
Great, gosh. I wish I'd had my husband come and watch this. He would have been so impressed.
You've got it on film. Sit him down.
Um, so you folks received a draft document that, um, we sent out last week. And like I said, we had a couple of webinars with the group, so there will be some minor adjustments that I'll walk through. But, but um, I hope you'll allow what we've done here where we've, we've made a suggested reorder to the standards with the goal of really having it, um, flow a little bit easier. Um, and I think that we'll only try to improve on that. That does make the rulemaking process a little more complicated. We'll probably have to do basically a strike all of the existing rule and then replace it with this. Um, but I, I have a table started that shows the, the crosswalk so that we don't lose important pieces that were changed. But the goal was really to have a statement of purpose. What are we asking of students? How we're gonna provide that? How we're going to measure that? Um, and then what are the, um, what are the outputs and measures at the end to ensure that students are getting what they need? Um, I also forgot, one more really important piece of current events, which is that S130, which is, was the Flexible Pathways Initiative, um, did pass out of the State House. So that really, um, was something we were working closely on and were really excited about. Um, it represents very well the initiatives that you folks and the governor and, um, the school boards and the superintendents and the principals, um, the NEA, all, all these groups really were moving in the same direction. Um, so flexible pathways, it means flexible pathways to graduation. So it expands the dual enrollment program so that all students, no matter, um, what school they're at in Vermont, will be able to take at least two college level dual enrollment courses during their, um, during senior year combined. Um, it expands on the early college program. Right now, that's through the Vermont Technical College. It's called VAST, Vermont Academy of Science and Technology. Um, so it, it, and obviously some of these things will take several years before they're really fully in place and accessible to students. Um, and again, it really is about ensuring that students have these different ways of demonstrating knowledge and that they really get a really high quality experience, um, throughout their careers. It also does have personalized learning plans, which is another, um, key tenet of the Education Quality Standards work. So they really, um, are alignment and that's not by accident. And I think that that's a, that's a really great step forward and a good vote of confidence for the work that this group has done. Um, so I guess we could just get started going through the document. Um, so on page three, there's a section, federal and state entitlements and non-discrimination. Um, this was a section that existed before, um, but there were, some of these pieces and parts were scattered throughout the standards, so we combined them into one section. Um, we did have our civil rights attorney, Barbara Crippen, uh, just review this to make sure that this was, um, acceptable language, and it certainly was. Um, so there's really not a lot of change to the language, but they've been reordered. That's why that's there. Um, on page four, under conditions, practices and resources, I know this is a section that you folks spent a lot of time talking about at past meetings. Um, just talking about how to, um, ensure that school leadership, um, are engaged in students' day-to-day activities. We had talked about, um, requiring or, or recommending that principal's teacher course. Um, and so the, the language here reflects those conversations and that evolution. Um, you know, the example that comes to mind was when, um, Secretary Villaseca mentioned that one of the best interaction times he had with students was just at recess with elementary school students, that he really got to, um, really have that, uh, relationship with them. Um, at the bottom of page four is just this one, uh, sentence about superintendent, supervisor reunion board members and school district board members shall carry out their duties in accordance with the statutes. Um, this was really because we felt that this school leadership section really had focused a lot on only the principal. And we know that it's really a team effort and, um, that school leadership is more than just the principal. And so we, um, Harry Frank, who's the commission representative from the Vermont School Boards Association, kindly volunteered to draft some language that outlined the different responsibilities for, um, superintendents and school board members and district board members. But really that is, um, and so the language that he shared with us was all what's reflected in statute. So in order to keep this as streamlined as possible, we're gonna try to just reference the statutory language, um, rather than repeating it in here, so that this is really only the recommendations of the board rule that are not in statute, if that makes sense.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I suppose it'd be good to have questions as we go along?
Sure.
Yeah, I, I think I'd like, like to run it that way, just to.
There's a bunch of small stuff that I'll do and track changes and send that are not, that kind of stuff. But one of the things, I'm still recovering from the legislative session in which there was this, um, frenzy, if you will, in terms of education spending and some last minute kinds of things. And I look at sections two, three, six of that bulleted list in the page four and say, hmm, these are new mandates. And, um, I'm very cautious about getting into, even though I agree with the concepts here. The question is, is if one, I, one arm of Montpelier is saying save money and the other arm is saying spend money with new mandates. We've got a bit of a problem.
Can you be a little more clear what the unfunded mandates are?
Okay, page four, two A2, school leadership team with, uh, which has compensation specifically there. The next is create professional, uh, learning groups, number three, which will also talk, uh, costs money and will be an item of negotiations. Number six, coordinate teacher support and evaluation, uh, and then get people to do teacher evaluations. That's gonna be a money item. And there's others in the document, but these are three that just jumped right out at me. I don't know the answer to that, but I'm just terribly conscious that we, we have competing pressures here and it got pretty ugly towards the end of the session.
Yes.
Um, I talked to my principal about this page in particular, and he really didn't see as unfunded mandate. And I asked him specifically, how would this work in our school? And he's thinking that if, if he frees up some of his time to, to work more with students, that frees up some teaching time to move to do some more administrative and more leadership positions. So he saw it as more of sharing of responsibilities that are already there and just being a little bit more flexible with people's positions and being able to move around and, and to do that. And then also with the, um, the professional learning groups, that's really already happening, I think, in most schools. And I'm thinking of my colleagues in other schools, and we already do that. We've late starts. Um, so students come in late, an hour and a half, and we have specific meetings every month. So I think a lot of this is, is already happening. It's not affecting the bottom line already. So I think just to be mindful that in practice, a lot of these, I think, are happening and haven't affected budgets. And that's what reflected my conversation with my principal.
It's gonna end up on the negotiations table.
Margaret.
Um, and Kristy, you're in a high school, which is fairly large. And, um, a lot of elementary schools, particularly small elementary schools, haven't historically had leadership teams. They've had the principal and the staff. Um, so to create a leadership team, which I think is a good idea, involves, um, probably teachers taking on that intermediary role between being a teacher and being a principal as part of this team. And it does involve costs. Um, recently I was working with a school that was considering doing this in elementary school. And they were estimating, um, that $3,000, at least $3,000 to $5,000 a year for this elementary leadership team because they would compensate the teachers and they would need a retreat day, um, in the, probably two a year. Um, those people are doing that on top of their teaching job. So I think in high schools where leadership teams have generally, there's been a leadership team, it's not the case in elementary schools.
This is just challenging in middle school too. Just in case you're wondering. But I would agree with, um, what, the principle of all of this makes perfect sense to me in terms of, and, and in fact, one of the things that I'm happy about and continue to be impressed with is that there's an alignment with what's happening and what's good practice. I do think that what Bill says in terms of how we compensate teachers is really the issue, particularly, I think particularly as it relates to leadership teams. And much more importantly, as Margaret said, in terms of elementary and middle school. And it is, it's definitely challenging.
And I, and I agree that it'll be challenging, but having worked in a very small elementary school of 36 kids and, and was at the time the largest high school in the state in Essex, it's a challenge, but it can occur. And you could do some, you know, you can, you know, when we look at our staff to student ratios, okay, there are places that we may be able to save there that people could have some time to do that. Not that it's not a challenge and that it's not, it may not cost some money, uh, but I, I can't, I wouldn't necessarily say that all, that these are unfunded mandates depending on how the school, you know, implements them. Um, and again, that's the challenge that we have in Vermont because everybody's a little different and people do interpret things differently. Um, but again, it's something that if they don't meet the requirements or unable to meet the requirements, there's always a waiver process that we have right now for EQS. So, uh, it happens, I'm not gonna say regularly, but it's not an uncommon thing for schools to request a waiver for a year or two, uh, from, uh, school quality standards.
Yes, Stacy.
Um, I'm just thinking about my, you know, daughter's first grade teacher who probably has had, I'd say at least 10 mornings, if not four days, where she's been out at the classroom doing reading assessments where the school's paid for a sub. And I wonder if as we move away from this very heavy, um, one-on-one kind of assessment mode, would, you know, from a school leadership perspective, could the school, could the principal or the superintendent say, you know, as a community, that's not what we value as much as this kind of collaborative leadership team. And there are other ways to assess student reading besides this incredibly intensive one-on-one where I think, you know, it's about filling out forms to fill out something else to say what number and you're on letter J, whereas I think those teachers know very well where their student's reading level is at without such little minutia. So maybe that's just one way, I think, to go to Armando's point where we could say this is what we value more than the micromanagement testing.
Just, just a little one. I was just curious about the numbers in number six, um, with principals responsible for supervising five teachers annually, but instructional leaders 10, and how you came to that decision or what you think about that.
I don't honestly remember that, that discussion specifically with the numbers, but it's definitely a good question. We can throw that back at the.
Yeah, I thi, I think the goal was, um, in order to have either, um, the time or ability to really do a helpful and thorough evaluation, that there needed to be some sort of number, maybe these aren't necessarily the exact numbers, but also, um, the idea of having instructional leaders take on some of that evaluation role so that the principal could be freed up to do some of the things above. I think that was the goal of that. So I'm not sure if five and 10 is necessarily the perfect numbers, but, but the intention is to, um, take advantage of those teacher leaders to have really more thoughtful and thorough evaluation and also to free up the principal to do more thoughtful and thorough evaluation and be more involved in the student interaction.
Okay, so what I, what I hear the board saying to you is that these three things are great, great things, but there, we have some questions about if they're unfunded mandates. So we'll leave that with you and we'll go on to page five.
Okay. Uh, so on page five, uh, this section, we spent a lot of time talking about here, and I'm not sure that this is still getting at exactly what you folks were looking for. This is really about class role, um, meaning attendance, not role as in R O L E, but R O L L. Um, and how, how to measure or require or, um, allow for really flexible ways of teaching, such as team teaching, co-teaching, blended learning where a student might be taking a course from another place, but there's a teacher facilitator. So there's, there's different ways. It's not simply there's one teacher at the head of the classroom and here's the classroom and that's it. There's a lot of different modes of delivering instruction. And so how to, um, ensure that the number of students that those teachers are assigned is taken to account, um, when, when counting the student role. I'm not sure if this, I know this was a point that you were, so it may not still.
It's still, because they could still report that. So I share, um, 90 students with another teacher. And so they still count that as 45 for me, you could do in the language, even though like we just had an assignment and each of us are grading pieces of it. So it's, we still get 90 assessments. We're still assessing 90, not just 45. So I don't know how to put that in. So it just seems like thick. This is kind of ambiguous. You could be like, oh, well, what does it count as somebody's role? And do I have? And do I have 45 students or 90? And so I'm looking at assessments, actually, I have 90 of them, I don't have 45, but my numbers would reflect 45. So that's this...
Yeah, I think, I think one of the problems we were struggling with at the commission level was some, one school's version of team teaching might be different than another school's version of team teaching.
Right, or even within the same school.
Yeah.
It looks different.
So let's see if we can take another stab at that.
Because with this measure, I could have 200 students, but it could still be reported as 100 because they count as half a student because there are two teachers in the room.
All right.
Got one little question related to this one. The section on a waiver, you know, Armando mentioned before that you could ask for a waiver for any of this, so I'm wondering why you specifically included the language about a waiver in this section, if people can ask for a waiver for any of it.
Yeah, this was, this was the existing language. Now that you say that, maybe we should move this to the end as well. I think this is where, you know, frankly, one of the biggest hammers in the existing school quality standards, or the biggest, most leaned on number that the school quality standards have right now was the class size. And so this section was really, I know when we would get calls at the agency, you know, parents calling or teachers calling about, that this piece of the school quality standards as they exist was one that was really pointed to quite a bit. So I think that's why that language existed before. But yeah, maybe we should move that to the variance section at the end.
Just following up on that, two years ago, we had to, at legislative request, come out with some guidelines for class sizes, and we were trying to be sensitive to the many small schools in the state, but still came up with some recommendations for classroom, not necessarily by grade, where this is talking, you know, with by grade. And honestly, as you, as you drive around the state and you go to many schools, these, you know, these, the numbers are much smaller. I was, I was very impressed this morning, I told the teacher I went to a class with 25 kids. I was like, whoa, you know, because most of the places I go to outside of certain areas, even high schools, summary, being that I go all over the state on a regular basis, it's not consistent. And I'm not saying that's the class, all of them, but I think this at least provides some guidelines for community members, say, you know, is it appropriate to have a classroom of eight kids, for example? Or is there a way to find, you know, do, do something else? But I think the waiver piece, in the current EQS, there's a whole waiver process. And just so folks are aware, waivers can only be granted one year at a time. So Stacy asked for a waiver for, because they can't find a practical arts teacher at Danville High School, that waiver would be for one year, and hopefully they would then find somebody. If not, they would request again. But before a waiver like that could be provided, they have to demonstrate that they've been trying to find a individual to teach, just using that because that's one of the ones that often is a challenge for us, particularly in the more rural high schools.
Okay.
On page six, you'll see there's a few minor changes to the school's comprehensive system of support services, just really trying to use more updated language and ensure that the terms are what the intent is, but not, not really changing the content significantly. Also, in the middle of page six, the school counseling services, this section was originally called school counselors, and it was simply really just this number of students per school counselor. So this removes the specific numeric requirement. It certainly does say that it shall be filled by licensed school counselors with enough personnel to carry out the resources. It also references student support for personalized learning plans, special education, alternative education. So that, that seemed like a more succinct and up-to-date definition of school counseling services.
Bill?
I would argue that the ratios be put back in for both counseling and health services. My concern is pure and simply that some, by some creative logic, some schools would be denied counseling and health services. And with professional learning plans coming online, that becomes more important to keep those ratios in.
With the ratios, Bill, I was thinking the same thing.
I agree.
Would, but no more than, I think right now guidance council is 400 to one.
Yes.
So to say not to exceed, so that what Bill's describing, which could happen.
Yes, it could.
And that at least there is some bookend. Doesn't mean that it has to be, but nobody can go above that.
Some top in.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, some top in. Because I know that when times are tough, particularly with budgets, that's where placed it.
Yeah, and that's, that's one of the perennial struggles of developing this document, is how do you, how are you directive enough and yet flexible enough? How are you supportive enough, but still, you know, at one point, somebody in the commission meeting said, we're planning for the best case and the worst case scenario. So it's sort of the two, the two bookends. We want to, we want to allow for as much creativity and flexibility and innovation as possible, but we also want to make sure that we have some kind of stopgap here so that it's not abused and students are not getting what they need.
Other questions on counseling? Not, page seven.
The one piece that there is, and it could have an impact on this, is that we're doing, we're required to do some study right now on mental health services with schools that could have an impact on this section in some way, but it would be premature to try to implement that. So I think the EQS process would work, because this report is not due to the legislators until, I think, January 15th of next year, and then whatever happens after that, so.
Well, if your committee could just make sure you're in line with this report when we adopt it.
That would be great.
Moving on to page seven.
Yep, and both on the counseling and the health services, one of the phrases that the commission put in here to try to alleviate some of that concern about removing the ratios, although I think we can get those back in there, was that the description of the services, both the counseling and the health, are part of the report that's provided to the agency so that the agency would have that full picture, and if there's a concern, then that would be something that could be measured. On page seven, graduation and curriculum requirements, we've, which, it actually is curriculum and graduation requirements, I have to swap those around. They were two separate sections. So you had this whole section about the curriculum all the way through, and then you had a section about graduation requirements. And between the last EQS meeting and when you folks got this, it really seemed like it flowed much better and made a lot more sense to have that be one united section. And especially if you think of the curriculum and then the graduation at the end, and also that the curriculum requirements reflect the things that we're asking for students in order to graduate, really should be at least something that's, that's considered throughout their grades and only gets more specific the older they get as far as graduation requirements.
Folks on the board, come to the same conclusion? Bill?
Question on flexible pathways, and I think this is a big one, important one.
And where are you, Bill?
Page seven.
Page seven, flexible pathways, am I ahead of us or are we...
You're right on, go ahead.
Okay. This is going to run smack dab into the science requirements, it's also going to run into the Sback requirements, because when you do flexible pathways, you're taking a very constructivist approach to education, which doesn't have the same kind of set piece taxonomy that you find in the science standards, which is very rigid in its structure. And when you do flexible pathways, it has exactly the opposite kind of thing, and getting those two things to reconcile is not logically possible. And what happens is if we come in with strong Sback criteria with a high cutoff point, and the same thing is true for science, what we're going to, and adopting a flexible pathways approach, we're setting up for a very high failure rate, which doesn't necessarily reflect the knowledge of the kids who have gone through the flexible pathways approach. And so actually, that's where the two philosophies are going to clash.
Maybe I'm just not getting, could you please explain that a little bit in a different way? I mean, really, I guess I didn't understand the, why the flexible pathways and having a common core state standards are, and you mentioned Sback, I'm not quite sure how Sback is the assessment, but we're talking about the standards here. So I guess just to point out...
Sback, if, if there's any kind of consequences attached to it, will end up as being a de facto state curriculum or national curriculum. And what it does is specify what's there, and if I go to the science standards, I take the periodic table, which is right there in the science requirements and all.
Next generation science requirement, I guess, we'll, I guess I...
Yes, we'll get to that.
Yeah, we'll get, that's right, I was looking around for my science books, but they're not even...
I went back and looked at those things. And so if you take a constructivist approach and you have a graduation challenge that builds a canoe, for example, that is not going to necessarily require you to have the periodic table, but yet you're going to have learning proficiencies and meet certain requirements of that. And so what's going to happen is that you're going to have a rigid set piece kind of curriculum. And one, one hand, while at the same time, you're going to have a constructivist approach to teaching it, which will not follow that same kind of rigid taxonomy.
But that sort of exists right now.
That's where it is, but that's not where it should be. In fact, that's the situation we need to remedy.
I think where the issue clashes is the issue of time. There's only so much time, and when there is a testing culture which requires X amounts of time, then the amount of time to provide varied learning opportunities is more limited. So much of the graduation challenge, which I think we would all say is wonderful learning, is forced into outside of school time. The piece that's in school time was the research paper. Fair enough, I mean, that's, that's, that's what's happened, but I think this is where it comes, the rubber meets the road. So I do think it impacts.
Could I just say something?
Yes.
I think we assume core knowledge for all of our kids, whether they're building canoes or they're, you know, doing snow making, whatever it is, we're assuming core knowledge. In the superintendent's document, we call that the learning proficiency. So we start from there, and then we say there are flexible ways to learn that, and there are flexible ways for you to demonstrate that you've learned it. And then I make a distinction between what we require for graduation, which I think is what we're trying to flesh out here, and what is AYP designation, which is related to the Sback. And then, you know, we could definitely have a conversation about that, but I see this as different. This is really setting out there, here is our goal for quality education. We believe this to be true, that if kids have some of their personal interests available to them in their learning, and they can demonstrate in multiple ways, that that's going to be better for all kids. And so for some kids, and today some kids are successful, just like looking at the periodic table, cognitively figuring that out up here and just spitting it back, and they know it as well as the kid that does it a totally different, hands-on kind of way. I don't know if that helps, Bill, but I really do see they're two different things.
They are two different things, and I agree with your premise as to what we should be doing. It's just going to run into the other one.
I'd rather park the other one there and have that battle separately.
So, Bill, do you have a suggestion of how you would change?
Actually, what the suggestion I would make would be in terms of the assessment and the testing piece more so than what we got here. This is the correct philosophy here. I'm just saying that we have two separate warring, we have a collision coming in terms of our educational philosophy and content.
So the way they've written subsection B here is...
I like it.
Okay, moving on.
I'm wondering if we could put the assessment system on our retreat agenda for a discussion in June.
Well, the, we'll get into this later. The plan is for the, my proposal to the board, maybe you just changed it, was that we'd have our regular meeting when we convened on, on the first day in the morning, and then we would go into our, our retreat in the afternoon and the next day. And in that retreat, we would begin to review the strategic plan, which is due for revision next year, and then go from there into priorities and then into evaluation. So that's going to be my proposal this afternoon, so that schedule does not go with what you're proposing here.
No, that sounds good. I mean, perhaps it should be on the next meeting agenda. I don't know if Michael Huck is available.
We can check, yeah.
Yeah. It would be useful.
As long as we know what they, I think that, yeah, he could probably be there.
Thank you.
Hey, Jay.
Page eight. So the, the top half, still under curriculum content coordination, or curriculum content coordination. I think this might be a piece where you folks would want to spend a little more time at the retreat, perhaps, really trying to get at ensuring that students have the physical education and physical activity and meet the standards that are outlined in Title 16 for this, but also allow for some flexibility in how that's done. I think at the last state board meeting, I had, I had a pretty sizable list of recommendations from our PE folks in the health department, and the quality standards commission has parsed that down some to get to this point.
Is the two, two classes for all 12 years or all 13 years, is that more than what's required now?
Well, right now, for graduation, they need to have one and a half years of PE in high school.
Right.
And in the earlier...
And you're requiring four years, right? In high school.
Yeah, that's what that looks like. But that can also be out of school?
I think it's the two...
Reading this?
Well, that's, that's the other question I had. I don't see where, this says physical education, it doesn't seem to allow, one of the things I thought of, if you're on an athletic, you're playing an athletic sport, does that count?
No.
Only, there's, well, there's, the answer is no. However, we do have an opportunity that if they can align their extracurricular activity to standards and assess it and have a person who's licensed in that area provide, and we have schools, I think Brattleboro has done that successfully, you guys or others, but it takes a lot of effort, and just playing a sport is not enough to meet that requirement. But there are some ways that that extracurricular activity, if it's proposed properly or in the right way and implemented that way, some of those things could count towards that. And I know that Brattleboro University School is one of those, and Elaine just raised her hands, and that CBU is as well.
I don't mean to be difficult on this, it just seems in this, this world today, when we're so concerned about obesity and, you know, and people's diet and all that, that, you know, to back off of physical activity is a wrong approach.
Right.
How you come up with it is...
Right. And then looking back to the existing language, that at least twice weekly is required K through eight, and then in the high school, it's one and a half years of it.
Right, right. So this is more stringent.
I would say so because in the high school...
The current standards require one and a half credits in high school plus a half credit of health, and the elementary ones, I think, are...
Twice weekly.
Twice a week. So I don't know if it's that much different. Is it, Jill, in the current ones? I'm not quite sure.
Stacy.
I was, I was, I can see why we can't do it, but I still feel like I want to put in the plug for, I believe Dr. Chen talked about, an additional 30 minutes of physical activity in addition to PE, and just thinking specifically about, especially middle school, just not having recess, not having unstructured outdoor time for kids, I think is such a mistake. And I recognize, you know, we can't do everything, but I would love to see, I would rather have PE once a week and then let the kids just be outside and have that, we're in Vermont, and we let, you know, push that. I see Bonnie looking at me like, how would we do that? But it just seems like...
Right, absolutely.
They develop, we know, the science, the brain science, everything we know about learning, they need that outdoor time, and I'd love to see if there's any way we can squeeze that in.
Walkman.
My question would be, and yeah, Brattleboro, we do sports option, you play, you have to play two sports, and then you write a paper, and you take all the standards for PE and you prove how you meet them through playing sports. So I guess my question would be if it's two physical education classes per week, how that would translate into like a block schedule? I know if you adjust, like this would be a major, you know, because then you're, like if you adjust, it's, you take it for every day for one block, for half a block every day for a semester. And then if you strap that over four years with it being twice a week, then you lose multiple blocks of, you know, up to four blocks.
So maybe more that time as opposed to...
Yeah, just wondering how that gets transitioned into a block schedule.
And in the, in the existing standards, that did seem to make a lot more sense in the K to eight, but it's a lot harder to translate.
Bill?
We'll take another stab at that.
I have a comment on something other than phys ed, if...
Okay, just quickly, you know, if, if you can accommodate it by putting all the detail in, maybe a philosophical statement of what the intent is and allow certain things, I don't know. But I think some of what you're hearing here is that, whether it's outside or inside, that, you know, that we think there ought to be some emphasis, it's the wrong trend to go away from physical exercise as opposed to more exercise.
Well, and I think the language that Dr. Chen and his group presented and that our PE folks brought to you folks, you know, that still exists, so we can, we can pull these back... back in here, no problem. I think they would certainly agree with the physical activity piece. Physical education is a specific thing that is required in statute. Physical activity is something different that can happen differently, different schools. So we'll, we'll work on that.
Bill, you're moving on.
Page eight, paragraph two. I suggest for the group that you delete or modify that, and here's the reason.
The whole paragraph?
Wait, which one? Which paragraph?
Page eight, second paragraph from the top, it's not highlighted.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
For many long years legislatively and with the board is that there's been a reluctance to give an entitlement to gifted and talented, and there's also, we know that tracking is not a healthy thing, and when we talk about universal skills for all children, having a system that would encourage tracking is not exactly where I'd want to go as a policy decision. And I think that the advocates for gifted and talented would see that paragraph and say, that's an entitlement. So my suggestion would be to strike the thing, but perhaps there's a way in which you can deal with that issue and have it be equitable.
I was just looking back, and that is actually in the exist, that's existing...
Is it?
Rule language, yep.
That's where DI, differential instruction comes in.
I, I mean, I, I see this as when I start a unit, I pre-test my students, and some of them already know all the material at the beginning, so I'm not going to make them go back and relearn. We did a world religion, someone scored, they, they got an ace to test before it even started, so I pushed them in a whole nother direction. I see that, where that's going. I wouldn't see that as a separate course, but more that, I'm, I had to redesign a unit for him, so instead of just world religions, it was world religions in, in wars and what role has it played. So we pushed it further. So I don't, I wouldn't see that as pushing them to their own separate class, but within the class, how do you go beyond that? I know, I saw that in Underland as a yes, let's keep pushing those people that, instead of keeping them bored in the class, keep them in the class, but keep them engaged and push them further.
Yeah, I don't know the solution. I just raised the issue for your consideration.
Okay, we're, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to keep, move us along because we've got an agenda here. Elementary, middle school curriculum, a lot of new language there.
Right, and, and that, that is new because it's basically verbatim stolen from the graduation requirements section, so now we combine them. That's the idea, meaning that throughout their education experience, not just in high school, they're keeping these, these pieces in mind.
Okay, and we had a pretty thorough discussion about that at the last meeting. All right, page nine.
Okay, so you might remember in the existing school quality standards, there's a section called multi-year plan. It's basically an alternate way that students with limiting disabilities, whether they're formally on some sort of an IEP or 504 or not, are still able to meet graduation requirements. And we had originally proposed, maybe we call that something different, you know, an alternative graduation plan, but there's a, there's a really strong team of folks at the agency who took a stab at modifying that language significantly, considering the fact that all students would have a personalized learning plan, you don't need to then have a separate personalized learning plan for those students. Rather, all students have a personalized learning plan to ensure they can reach graduation. And this number four ensures that those students who do have those specific entitlements or who do have different needs, that that's, that this is trying to get at what they would lose by not having that. So that's a very big shift in special education, but the folks in the agency were pretty excited about at least presenting this. It does put a lot of emphasis on the personalized learning plan to ensure that that really does happen.
Okay, any comments? Hearing no comments.
I should add too, that's just also trying to...
Hearing no comments.
It's only taken us two years to pick up those, you know, cues.
So I don't see any major changes on page 10?
No.
Page 11?
This is simply a, essentially reorganizing and updating the language. There were sections about access to current technology, materials, library, you know, looking at the library here, and most of the students were using a computer, you know, library is different. So this is combining the language that currently existed about access to current materials, which said things like up-to-date textbooks, and is more about ensuring students have access to the resources, no matter how they access those resources. It does also put a plug in for broadband internet service for schools, for what it's worth, because that's certainly a roadblock.
Any comments on, on this new language? Page 12?
Page 12, that's simply reiterating the same language that exists elsewhere. This was language that the committee came up with for graduation, but it certainly seemed just as appropriate and actually potentially more appropriate to be in what the local comprehensive assessment system would be. So again, the graduation requirement that these students did here this morning is a great example of that. That's something developed in their school.
Page 12, a quick question. Each school shall account for 100% of its students in regard to participation in assessments. Federal law allows parents to opt their kids out. Was accounting for the student mean that the parent refused and you would account for them that way?
Well, you can, I think the answer is that you can account for the 100% by saying, Bill Mathis, the parent, decided not to test Armando, whatever.
And that's okay.
Well, I, it's going to have to be...
No, I mean, that's acceptable from our point of view.
Yeah, we, you know, I think it's interesting, and this might be a discussion later on, whether it's at the retreat, where we may have some folks, some, some of our licensed professionals around the state who may be encouraging parents to opt out of testing, which to me goes counter to their professional responsibility and obligation to ensure that all kids are assessed. So it's an interesting question, but to me, the answer would be yes. 100% of our kids are accounted for, even though only 98 out of 100 took the standardized assessment.
98% took the test, 2% opted out.
Or some, yes, and the feds are going to have to...
Serious illness or some such.
Because we don't, we didn't tie, like other states tied it to high stakes testing where you need to meet the standard or some, in order to graduate, where other states have that as a requirement. Massachusetts, for example, is one of those states. Rhode Island.
Okay, Margaret?
Just a question on the evaluation section. I wonder if in, in two, it says all staff, including administrators, but I'm wondering if the section can clarify that this is talking about leadership standards as well as, you know, administrators as well as teachers?
What page are you on?
Page 11.
Page 11, you back from page 11?
Back to 11.
Yeah, well, no, it's, I'm talking about, mostly on top of 12, but staff, what does staff mean? Clearly articulated in that it includes administration as well as teachers.
Thank you.
Okay, any comment? Ready to move to page 13?
Sure, so on page 13, this is, the continuous improvement plan essentially replaces the existing action plan that's laid out in school quality standards. If you folks did decide that you wanted to make this change, it would actually require us to go, a statutory change, because the statute currently calls it an action plan. The goal is not that this is a separate plan, it's simply, this is called something different. And the hope is that this action plan would encompass all the other plans that we have schools do. They have their technology plan, they might have a school improvement plan, that, that this would be a comprehensive plan that incorporated all that into one document, not that this would be an additional requirement.
Alex, do you guys?
Chris?
So, does this relate to the NEAS? Because when the schools are being credited and going through, they make a plan for that. Is that going to be rolled in also to this, or is that another separate plan?
It could be, yeah.
We'd love to convince NEAS to do that.
Okay.
NEAS is much more open to that.
Right, right, okay.
Yes, because that's the last, the last thing we would need is one plan for one group of accountability and then the other one for something else, so yes.
Okay.
Can you consider that a reasonable statute change, right? Am I, yeah, thank you.
Bill?
Small thing on 13 in the yellow highlighted. The CIP shall be developed using indicators provided by the agency. That constricts it by its wording to only those elements that are specified there. Was that your intent, or could the local ad indicators of their own choosing?
Oh, I'm sure they could. I think the intent is to ensure that they at least do that, but that's not clear.
But I think that's a, I think that is not, it would be a nice addition in some way to add, along with local measures or whatever.
If it says shall include the following, but is not limited to...
Right.
Blah, blah, blah.
Any comments for the comments on page 13? No changes on 14? Are there any comments from board members? No changes on page 15? Comments from board members? Bill?
15 in variance, that just comes in from nowhere. I couldn't find rule 2100 on the web, and we're making a cross-reference here that doesn't follow from the rest of the document. It's almost like there's a separate section or something's missing there.
Yeah, we keep trying to figure out where to plunk that. It does exist in existing language. It's, it's, and it's largely unchanged. It is existing language. We, we thought it might be appropriate to put here, it could go at the very end, but it made sense to kind of have it after this, this piece about reporting and planning, that if at the end of that, the school needs to apply for a waiver. And, and I don't know if you folks feel like this should be called waiver instead of variance or, or not, but that's...
Waiver section would seem the logical place, but I don't know how that shivers off.
Page 16, no proposed changes, comments? Yes, Margaret?
I'm thinking on page 16, well, actually, it's this section.
What section you're talking about, please?
Well, it's, it's not, it's probably the whole section. I'm thinking of your question about how the EQS can support creativity, flexibility, and innovation as strongly as it supports compliance. And particularly sees, a lot of it is, the lens is looking at compliance. And I'm wondering how you can use this to, use this section to encourage creativity, flexibility, and innovation, recognition of that, and sharing of that between schools. So I think, I think this could be more balanced to this section.
Bill?
Other thing that's in 16, which is two, all schools failing to meet the state accountability standards, but again, I'm finding myself looking for those things on the web and did not find them, and I don't think we can think about the educational quality standards without thinking about the accountability standards, which is what you do with those evaluation stuff, and that, there's nothing here that tells me that.
Tells you what?
What the state accountability standards are.
But they...
We just go through them.
It just says they're there, but where are they? And what are they?
Well, they, they change all the time.
The current accountability, and I, and I, well, I think Bonnie's, Bonnie's right. They will be changing.
I mean, so it's hard to put them in a document.
John, do you have any, one of the things, we currently have, we have the kneecap graduation requirements at the high school level as part of our accountability. What John and, and many of us have been working for the last few years is coming up with a much broader and more comprehensive accountability system. So you're right, Bill, that's not listed in here, but I think it will, as we propose changing the current standards, and hopefully the federal government will, will embrace our system, looking at multiple measures, not just the current, which is still fairly narrow for high schools' graduation requirements, kneecap standards.
It will evolve with whatever the next reorganization is.
Apparently, it's the AYP. Which is in our state, it's a state statute.
The term SQS was, was the existing document that tried to broaden what a sound educational system looked like, separate from AYP federal measures.
This is a much bigger question than today, but I think that this is something the state board should be proactive on in terms of not really listening exactly to the feds as much as saying, this is what we want for Vermont, so feds, let's do it.
And the feds do allow us to come up with, and they've allowed states to come up with their own accountability, but that doesn't meet that, but in their world, let's assume we use student grades in the classroom, continuation from high school, attendance, discipline referrals, you know, students taking the highest level courses in their school, regardless of what that may be, along with Sback and everything else. The fed said you can do that in the state, however, we will only look at...
Sback.
Sback. And that's where we're having that push and pull bill. So we'll come up with our own, and are coming up with our own state accountability measures, what I would like them to be the same, eventually, or whoever, to be, for that to be the same, because then you have this situation where you meet the state ones but not the federal ones, or vice versa. And that's the push and pull that John and I and many other states have been having with, with the US Department of Education.
Well, I think we should all engage in the push and the pull.
But again, we have 82,000 students in this little push and pull, so we're like, you know, there's only so much pushing and so much pulling that a state like Vermont, so we need places that, when, when California came up and said, we like what Vermont's talking about, all of a sudden, that raised me from, you know, from an ant to, you know, something else. And then we can raise a few more states, then all of a sudden, our power to make these changes go up. But I think for Vermont alone to say, this is what we're going to do, and we're going to push back, I'm not quite sure how much push we have.
Well, I think we should.
Oh, and we are.
As a matter of principle.
And we are, we didn't, I mean, we, I think, we have been pushing back around many things.
All right, moving on.
Second thing on C below. The secretary's decision shall be final on the classification, but then it does come back to, after they fail for a couple of years, it comes back.
I don't know, Bill, where are you from? You've got to tell us.
It's 16...
Oh, 16A. CA?
CA and CB.
CA and CB, okay.
Is, secretary's decision shall be final, but then there's an appeal if they do not make whatever the standards are that are not specified here, and the second year it comes to the state board. And the question I'd ask, and I'm not fixed on the answer, is, do we want to approve those, or do these need to go by the state board in year one, or do we want to wait till year two? I'm not sure of what the answer should be, but I just think it's a topic that's worthy of thought.
I, I think the answer is no. I mean, if we're looking for an answer, I think the first phase should come through the agency, and then if something doesn't, then maybe, because in, in, in the first one, there's no, some consequences, I guess is the word I'm looking at, where second one, where there may be consequences, would then be required by the board, and Bill may have some...
This is following the statute, the state statute, you know, most of the exact, of course of verbatim, and that was part of Act 60, so we had a two-year AYP period at that point. And then it came along the No Child Left Behind Act and made it a one-year period. And then, so there's session law on statute that says, while, while No Child Left Behind is enforced, we will use a one-year period, because that's what the feds require and we accept their money. So that's, so the, the struggle, the two-year references to the statute, which comes from Act, which comes from Act 60 and the old system we had until the session law came along and said, as long as we're taking the nickelie money, we'll do the one-year standard.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill.
So if there's any change, it would have to be statutory, I think, of what you're describing, if that change...
Yeah, I remember that now that you mentioned it.
That might be something that next year you look at as, if that's something the board's interested in, look at that as one of your legislative goals.
Okay, page 17. Change down at the bottom, personal learning plans.
These were just an update to the definitions, to try to be...
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, Bill?
A new law says grade seven through 12, and this says kindergarten 12.
Yes, that's right, that's right.
Yep.
Do we want to keep this, this way, or do we not?
That was brought up in our webinar on Friday.
I think the, again, we may want to eventually go down to the elementary grades, but I think for clarity and just not confusing people, we should be consistent with the statutory language. So I think Bill's point, Jill.
And also that the...
So what are we doing by being consistent?
It's going to seventh instead of kindergarten, seven to 12 instead of kindergarten through 12.
And it's like, well, pathways calls for a group to get together about PLPs and examine the feasibility and helpfulness of having it in lower grades.
And the conversation, just as, why we went seven, and this is a conversation, I remember Jeff and Martha and Steve and others and Ken, about a PLP for a first grader should be, should look different than, let's say, a PLP for a ninth grader, where really, if there is such a thing, and we didn't go there, would be more about, you know, making sure that they're meeting standards, making sure they're getting the support, that they're progressing in a way that they're meeting standards, where the PLP is more about their plan for the next six years, how, what they're doing in school may align with what they're interested in doing in the future. So that's where I think that, that kindergarten came out, but I think it should be consistent.
Hope that's helpful. We look forward.
Oh, and that last paragraph.
There's a what?
There's a type of, there's a two-word, mean, means.
Don't show this part of your...
That's, just, just to prove that she read the whole thing, that's what that's all about. I have one quick question. I have one quick question. The folks in the back row, have you been part of this EQS process? Or are you all coming in in June and with all your thoughts and?
Well, we reserve the right to come in in June. I'm from the School Boards Association, Kerry Frank has been part of the group, and Jill and David Ruff came to a board meeting a week or two ago and did a presentation for our board. So I think people are pretty well engaged.
Does that also go true for the other associations?
Andre and Missy here and Budway have been serving on that.
Great, okay.
They're on my boards.
All right, it's just Donna, I mean, you're sitting back there so quietly, and I was just seeing the June scene, where you're just going to pounce on us and say, this is all for, for naught. So Jeff?
Jeff Francis from the Superintendent's Association, Elaine Pygmy and Martha Tucker were our representatives. I don't envision a scenario that you described at the June meeting. I think that the.
Underline that in the minutes, would you please, Carol?
The unresolved deliberations of the board today caught my interest. So I think it's not as though you don't have issues yet resolved, but I don't think that there will be any surprises.
Okay, good. Martha?
Same goes for Vermont NEA, we have two teachers who are on the commission.
Great.
I also have a few little notes I'm going to check with Jill.
Okay. Well, it's, it sounds like it's been a wonderful collaborative process, and we look forward to seeing the last, and final report and final action in June. We will stand in recess until eleven-ten.
Oh, that's great, excellent.
Item F, Teacher Leader Task Force update with John Fisher and Marta Canberra, and some others, it looks like.
And some others, yes.
Not, not John Fisher. Okay. For the record, why doesn't everyone introduce themselves, and then you may proceed.
Good morning, I'm Marta Canberra, Director of Educated Quality, and also a member of the Task Force on Teacher and Leader Effectiveness.
I'm Martha Allen, President of Vermont NEA, and I also serve on the Task Force.
Nicole Mace, Associate Director of the Vermont School Boards Association and a member of the Task Force.
Ken Page, Director of the Vermont Principals Association, and I'm also a member of the Task Force.
So this is an update, is that the intent of this today?
Exactly. This is an update, as you recall, you approved the guidelines for teacher and leader effectiveness last June at your June meeting. And at this point, the Task Force is working on developing a model for the teacher evaluation system, not a statewide system, but a model that districts are able to use, or they can use their own system, but it needs to be focused on the guidelines that we, that you approved last year. So as you can tell by the one pager that we brought to you today, we have done a great deal of research, and we've had researchers come in and address the Task Force, primarily Laura Goh, who's a research consultant at ETS, who talked about group models and about multiple measures in assessing in the evaluation system. At, at our last meeting, we had two people from, we had Scott Marion and Charlie De Pascal from the Center on Assessment, who presented a great deal of information on student learning objectives. We had discussed and looked at quite a bit of research on student learning objectives, but last week, Scott and Charlie really gave us a wonderful presentation on how they are used, what they're used for, and what the best way to use them. And I know that when Jill and the group presented the, what their presentation was talking about personal learning plans, the SLOs are really an important part of that, because with personal learning plans, the research indicates that you can develop, as you develop a specific PLP for each student, SLOs are developed best when they're developed in collaboration with other teachers. Student learning objectives can be developed individually by a teacher, but the most effective way is through a collaboration, and I know that that's part of what they had spoken about. We continue to improve our model and are hoping to soon have the draft model for the teacher evaluation system. We will then be working on the leader evaluation tool and model. We felt that we couldn't effectively work on both of them together, because it's too huge a task to do that. We want to do teacher and leader, and to give it our best work in working at them separately. You can read what we've done thus far, I won't be reading that to you, but others on the Task Force will have comments to also tell you more of the things that we're doing.
Sure. So I just wanted to speak briefly about some key decisions that were made by the Task Force, that we spent a lot of time, as Marta suggested, looking at research and discussing amongst ourselves, but we actually have made some pretty, I think, critical decisions. The first big one was, what is the purpose of the Vermont model? What are we trying to accomplish with this model evaluation system? We've identified six, to improve professional practice, to support the use of evidence and data to improve practice, to hold teachers accountable for student learning, to provide support to teachers in meeting performance expectations, to inform personnel decisions through a fair and equitable evaluation process, and to remove teachers with persistent underperformance. But the key to all of this is, and I think the shift that's being made here, is that student growth and learning are central to an educator's evaluation. So that's the first sort of set of decisions that we made. The second is, as Marta referenced, SLOs, student learning objectives. Because student growth and learning is central to the evaluation, it's important that we measure that in a way that's fair and accurate. And a lot of states are using SLOs as one method to document the influence that educators have on student learning over a specific amount of time. And the thing that we liked about the SLO model, and I think others can jump in also, was that they provide the opportunity for all educators to set meaningful goals, collaborate with other educators around those shared goals, monitor student and teacher progress toward goals, and evaluate the extent to which those goals are being achieved. So that, the SLO itself would be one measure of student growth that could be used within a teacher's evaluation.
And it can be used also in the non-tested, for teachers in the non-tested areas as well.
That's actually a huge point that she just made.
And I'll just share that in the last two years at the Leadership Academy, Joan Cavalo from San Albans City School has come, and they have a system where teachers are part of, an advisory, and that part where they collect evidence and they share the evidence with each other, it really isn't about sort of evaluation being done to you, you're part of this. This is an active process of sharing growth. So if you want to see a good example of what we've talked through, San Albans City School certainly has one.
And the last thing I'll just talk about in terms of a decision was, we identified a theory of action, in terms of what a comprehensive teacher effectiveness system could accomplish, what's designed to do. I'm not going to read it to you, but we do have a full-page theory. And in drafting it, I, we really wanted to ensure that this work was complementary and aligned with a lot of the other work that's going on with the Education Quality Standards Commission, so that this isn't something that's sort of sitting out by itself. And I'll just read to you the first two elements of our theory of action. If we want all students to learn and achieve, then we provide personalized learning experiences and environments that are equitable, accessible, ensure rigor, continually assess student learning and growth, and adapt to changing learning needs. If we want such learning environments, then we provide effective teachers for all students, as teacher effectiveness is the greatest indicator of student learning and achievement within the school system. And we move down from there in terms of dialing down to what an actual model will look like. We have had the benefit of learning from other states that have moved forward with a comprehensive evaluation system, many of whom have made many mistakes. We know that some major implementation challenges will include sufficient training, resources, and guidance to ensure that any new system is implemented with fidelity and is done so effectively with, with the goal of improving student outcomes.
What's the timeline of the Task Force?
Forever.
That.
We started, when did we start, in twenty-ten?
Twenty-ten, yes.
Fall of twenty-ten, three of us, and we grew, and then we shrunk. And I think we plan on having a draft of the teacher model sometime in the fall, our goal, but then we're going to do the principal model. And so I'm not sure, our next meeting is next week, and we're going to put, set some benchmarks and more meeting dates, so that we can, we're getting closer.
And so refresh my, my memory anyway, so what's the, what's the, you know, eventual hope of where this all goes? I mean, is this, are you going to come back this fall to us with the, the teacher model?
We can, we will give you an update when the teacher model is completed.
Uh-huh. But we don't take action on that.
You took action last June.
You took action on the guidelines. And this is only what we're trying, we're trying to give districts the opportunity.
This is a detail.
Exactly. The components of the guidelines are just the broad umbrella. And so from there, we went and chose, chose certain specific components for each of those to put. So really, a district could, if they wanted to, just put their name on the top of our particular model, but otherwise, they might just take one component. They might say, we're doing a good job with our class evaluation piece, so I'm not going to talk about that, but collecting artifacts and that kind of thing, that looks good. So they can, whatever it takes for each district to follow the guidelines.
The decision was made at the very beginning, not to have it be a statewide mandated system, but to have districts use what they are, what they have been working on and what they have been using, so that, that's the reason that we don't have a statewide evaluation model that everyone needs to use.
Thank you. Bill?
Got some questions about the SLOs, and perhaps just explaining a little bit more about what they are, but I'm assuming you're setting, you're saying student learning objectives, and you're going to use some kind of growth model, which implies some kind of pre-measure and post-measure.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Biggest problem with those from the research is the assignment of students to classes. And for the thing to work, they need to be randomly assigned. And if you, but of course, that's a condition that's not met in schools. You may have a disruptive child in a particular class, which really just messes up the growth of students that year. Or it may be that, there may be some kind of tracking inadvertent, or else a teacher is assigned, who deals well with emotionally disturbed children, would have more of those students in their class. How do you control or adjust for this difference in the grouping of students?
A couple of different things. Teachers will be asked to create one or two SLOs. It wouldn't be for each individual student, it would be for a, a population. It could, if you taught four history classes, you might choose your American history class to develop your SLO. So it would be a sampling of your work. So if you had, and you, you're given about six weeks or so in the fall to determine what your SLO would be, as you get to know your students and where you think they're going to go. So that if you had a class that had really diverse population of, of learning ability, you might choose another class, and then set your, set your, your goals, your, your targets. So that there's, there's flexibility as far as which group of students you would choose. And then if you have a, you might choose your most challenging group of students, and their move, your, their growth expectations might be different than your AP class. So, so you can tailor it according to that.
So the teacher sets the SLOs after they've had a chance to see what their class is?
Yes, and then works with the administration to get those, to make sure that those are good targets.
Part of all of this will be, how do, how are you going to differentiate in any particular classroom?
So we heard, as was mentioned, we heard from researchers from the Center for Assessment, and they raised that specific issue you, you raised around random assignment. And there are ways to, and I don't have all the information here, but I do have some reports. But I will say a couple of things, that there are three specific components of a student learning objective. There's the, the learning goal, which should be aligned to a standard. There are assessments, which are supposedly aligned with the, with the standard also. And then there are targets for your students. So given your population, what targets do you expect? And knowing where they are at the beginning of the year, where, where do you expect them to be as a result of your practice by the end of the year? And I, I recall there being models where educators could set different targets for different populations, given where they started, but the goal is growth. The goal is not everybody's performing at, at exactly the same place by the end of the year.
The idea is to try to demonstrate the effectiveness of the teacher. So it's not, it's not covering every single subject that that teacher might teach.
And I also think that what the research has shown is that best practice is not that individual teachers are setting their own SLOs, but that they're working collaboratively with their colleagues. So if there's, there are multiple English language teachers, that they are, English language arts teachers, that they are sort of identifying what the standards are, what they want to emphasize, what the school goals are in terms of that particular standard, and across the department are working on similar SLOs, knowing that their individual student populations may be different.
And, and one other thing that we hope to accomplish with student learning objectives is give teachers a tool that they can use to incorporate the Common Core standards. So their standards may, the, the Common Core standards may be a part of, of their target. They'll be incorporating them in. So hopefully that's, because it will seem as though it's one more thing on a teacher's plate, and we want to give teachers a tool to use to help with the implementation of the Common Core. We think this will be helpful, aside from being in the evaluation system.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, is there a link to your working documents, or do you have, I mean, would you want us to look at and raise questions? Because some of the things you're looking at, we don't have, so we're curious about that.
The theory of action, we can, we can make certain that you do get the theory of action that we've been working on.
And we can get to the guidelines if you, actually, they're on the.
The guideline is, there's a link.
They're on the State Board from June of twenty-twelve. The State Board minutes.
All right, great, thank you.
Actually, I actually sent that to you last time, remember? That was what I sent you.
Last meeting.
That's right.
We'll send you the theory of action.
Thank you very much for all your hard work, and it looks like you're making great progress.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sometimes we feel like, as we, that we are doing, making significant progress, and sometimes we feel we're taking a step back. But we will keep moving.
And we understand that feeling. All right, we'll move on to an Act one fifty-three, one fifty-six update from Bill Palat. Vaughn?
This is your depressing news, Steve.
Yes. And before you start, let me say, I, I at least personally, don't hold you accountable for these results.
That's kind of it, isn't it?
There are, there is movement when you take Act one fifty-three and one fifty-six together, and.
Which way, though? Forward or backwards? Kind of a rounded surface. I'll stop, Vaughn, and let you give your report now.
There's one new addition to the first page, Orange Southwest went down in a, in a vote, I think people are aware of that from earlier, but the smallest district defeated it by sixteen votes, the other two overwhelmingly approved it. All along, we've known that the. All along, we've known that the biggest obstacle to overcome wasn't the notion that people don't like this. It was that to actually get a regional education district, you needed a majority that makes the 60 votes in the US Senate look trivial. There are now ways of getting, of moving forward and getting around that obstacle that were put in place in Act 156. And those studies are just beginning. In fact, I have a whole folder full of them, but I ought to be further on than I am. But I'm going to take a vacation next week, and then I do nothing but that and work with Norm Andrews, and everything's going to be wonderful shortly.
It's just going to fall further behind. What is a vacation business?
Yeah, I didn't approve it. I didn't approve it.
Oh, I put it in wrong. Triplicate, quadruple it, I included, um...
Wait a minute. This board no longer has anything to do with...
That's right, that's right, that's right.
The, um... The first, what they chose to do in a lot of cases, which is actually quite sensible, is Act 156 allowed a $5,000 grant, which had very, very basic requirements. At least two districts or two SUs wanted to talk about some joint activity to improve effectiveness or efficiency. And then, there's a $10,000 grant that would allow them to develop anything other than a merger. And then, there are $20,000 grants that allow them to look into mergers. So where a great many of them are, a great many of them are starting out logically enough is the $5,000 grants. We have them looking at things like whether a, a joint district is possible, whether a unified union makes more sense. The, Act 156 didn't pass, and it was one of the very last end-of-session bills that passed last year. The school boards didn't really have a chance to start looking at it until fall. And amazingly enough, they spend a certain amount of time on budgets that time of year. So just as the legislature was starting, I got this and didn't get much further on it. But they do have some good ideas. They are moving forward. I think you already know about the modified Unified Union School District, which was put in, um... I guess it's fair to say at the urging of some of the districts of Chittenden East because of, and our argument that it's simply anti-democratic to allow such a small minority to stop movement. And so, you now have an occasion where districts that choose not to participate can maintain their local districts, but, and will still belong to a union, just as they did before for those grades. But the remainder of the districts, as long as it's at least a majority, can be in the Union K or PK-12. And there are beginning discussions in several places. What's Frank Crocker's district? One of the oranges.
Crocker's, Andrew Windsor.
Okay, that's probably, at any rate.
Steven John, what's Steven John's?
Steven John's Wyndham Central.
That's, yeah, Steven, that one, they are looking at one, and...
It's a very important school district, Wyndham Central.
Absolutely. And, and, and at the cutting edge, and I mean that with a fair amount of seriousness, not just to be, to share the politeness that the chair deserves, but in a number of dimensions, they actually are at the cutting edge. And I was given permission yesterday afternoon to announce by Superintendent Albergini that they have reached a point in their discussions where I could announce, and he stressed, used the word preliminary. They are in preliminary discussions to have a modified Unified Union vote that would replace the red vote that they lost two districts on.
Chittenden East.
Chittenden East. So each of those is of some size, and the, if that were to come about, some of the expected effects should, should come to pass. I didn't add all of the, the small studies, mostly because I didn't have time and it'd be better to process them. But we have a fair stack of studies to go through that... Now, a lot of these are not designed to create mergers. They're designed to, to enable districts to work together. It could be, you need a particular, um... You have to share boundaries, which makes certain kinds of things feasible. And you can work together even down to sharing class trips for eighth graders or whatever. So there's no reason to believe that most of these are going to lead to mergers. But a number of them are initiating broad-based discussions of where collaboration is possible. And in some cases, they could have consequences that are much greater than ever imagined. I mean, the Two Rivers District, which will be responsible for students July 1st, simply started as a general discussion of a few shared activities. Now, there are a number of additional amendments to Act 153 and Act 156 that makes more sense for me to join Jill and talk about when she gives the legislative update for, for this year. But the required Special Education Task Force completed the first part of its work and submitted a report, and a number of its recommendations are reflected in that legislation. That was on the movement of personnel to supervisor unions, special education personnel to supervisor unions from districts.
Let me interrupt for just a second.
Sure.
I mean, as, as you well know, this, this board, and with prior membership, and it's, I'm certainly speaking for the current board, took a very strong position on encouraging school districts to consolidate.
Yes, sir.
SU consolidation.
SU consolidation, yes. And then there, you know, we were encouraged by, you know, a number of the educational partners, as long as legislators, that that was the wrong way to go. Subsequently, 153, 156 came along, and we backed off and said, okay, you know, let's give this some time. We've given it some time, and I'm not seeing a lot of progress here. Speaking personally, not for the full board, because we have not taken a position on it yet. What's the climate out there now, do you think, to be more, I mean, I think most people think that 300 and some odd school districts, 60 supervisors of unions may be a bit much for administrating schools in Vermont?
Except for their own.
With a, with a declining school population? So what, is there any climate out there for further?
Before you go, I just want to answer. We have not been less aggressive, Stephen. One of the things, and I just want to point out that just in the past six months, we've gone to Winuski, after they had a superintendency opening and said, you know, we're requiring you to do a study of some sort, come back with a recommendation for what your district may look like. I think it's a great opportunity for Burlington and Winuski to maybe look at some shared services, but that's something they need to do. We've looked at the Orange East. And really, Orange East was really looked at because we're looking at Blue Mountain, which was next to it, which has about 450 students, K to 12, and they have their own supervisor union.
And they tuition.
Right. So we have not been, we just had a conversation with Baton Kill Valley, and Vaughn and I are going down to a board meeting. They're having a vote with the community about what the community wants to do, but I remind them, it's not what the, it's what you've been tasked to do, which is to look at possibly the joining going north to Rutland-Bennington or south to Southwest Vermont. That's the question that we asked them. So we have not been less aggressive. The question will be, when I bring these back to you, I'm not quite sure where the board is on this issue.
Let me kind of sort it out a little bit. Act 153?
No, but I'm saying in general, they might not want anything, but, and Sand, you know, we had, we had a board member from Sandgate talking to us as well. Sandgate does not operate a school. So there's all these configurations, but my concern is when I bring it to you, I think that's an opportunity at our retreat to talk about where's the board on these issues.
Let me just try to sort it out, because Act 153 was trying to get districts to merge. The, the State Board doesn't control that.
That's right.
That's a local decision. It also wants to see services provided by supervisor unions, which are defined as administrative entities, not municipality or district. It wants them to provide more services to the districts. Services that used to be called optional are now required, such as special ed transportation.
Starting next year.
Financial management. All right, so those are those two things. In addition to that, the conversation started by you folks and it carried on by Armando, we're talking about merging supervisor unions. That, that you control. The law says you make, you draw those boundaries. Now, in a few cases where we've talked to districts, like Vaughn said, everybody thinks it's a good idea until it's their own. There's a lot of resistance locally. We're getting a lot of pushback for folks not wanting to do that. So in the end, you're going to be asked a question in the face of people coming here saying, don't do this to us.
Well, for example, what, you know, there were a number of occasions where the board graciously gave SUs the option of doing their own study or for potential boundary changes, or having the agency do it. And in some of those cases, it certainly appears that they're spending a great deal of their time proving that there shouldn't be a change at all, rather than... But you asked the, the most fundamental question you asked about how it's going. A lot of that depends on how we think it ought to go. And the one thing, you know, if I get hit in the head enough times, it starts penetrating. And I think that all of us, in the agency, in the State Board, in the legislature, maybe more than other places, because they tend to see things in two-year electoral cycles, we've underestimated the length of time it takes for some of these changes actually to come to pass, to build consensus, to bring members of the community in. The secretary and I have met many times with Association of Realtors, who are very interested in it. There are a number of other business associations who are, who are interested in efficiency from a business point of view, both in terms of...
Business Roundtable, Chamber.
Yeah, the Chamber. And Jill and I will have a chance to talk about how it's playing out with the movement of people to SUs as well. But it simply turns out that what we ask them to do, to some, to some extent, we may have had an overly optimistic timeframe, and it's going to be hard to... When, when, when things seem desperately necessary in tough times, you want to do something. But so often, a change is declared not working before it's had time to work. When Act 60 passed, just to pick one example, then I'll stop. If all the years of Act 160, when you started with the transition provisions, and then you had the Freeman Foundation, there was exactly one year of pure, unsubsidized, no special provision Act 60 data. And then, Act 68 took over. You know, I, I see this again and again and again, where we're in the middle, and frustration over lack of progress truncates. And this is not ecstatic. The good news is that in every case but one, a significant majority of districts and a substantial total of overall votes were in favor of the proposition put in front of the voters. The other piece of good news is that the people who gathered together on the study committee were proud of what they had to offer, and I think that's reflected in the board's reactions to them. That, that these people believed, and it's up to the voters, but whatever my personal opinion is worth, I agreed with them, that they were offering something of value, and they persuaded significantly more than half of the voters.
Bill?
Quick question. My experience with consolidation of services was something that we were able to pull off pretty easily. Consolidating schools or consolidating governmental entities was much tougher. Are you finding consolidating services to be an easier road than consolidating districts?
It's hap, consolidation of services is happening. It's moving slowly, but it's happening.
But the services have to be in place by July 1, 2014.
Well, that's about to change for special ed, I'll get to that. Okay, right. But the, the other point that needs to be made is, you, I mean, you can consolidate as many services as you want. If you have a high school of under 50 people, it's not offering something that a high school of 150 people can offer. And the, the other thing that I think we really always need to keep in mind is part of why administration is growing in Vermont, and part of why we and administrators and districts keep getting beaten up, is that there's a flood of constant requests for new information. And the information is either by school or it's by district. So even if you merge services, every one of these reports is going to be compiled either by school or by district. And if you have a whole bunch of them, there, there are two parts to every collection, a fixed cost and, and relative to students. But little districts are picking up fixed costs similar to very, very large districts. And so, consolidating services helps a great deal with one problem, but there are several other problems out there that it's not too likely to get us very far on.
I understand, I was just wondering which was most expedient. I was just wondering which was most expedient there.
Hopefully, once the, as SUs start to look more like districts as they become more responsible for things, maybe the thought will catch on that, well, maybe we should be a district, who knows? But, you know, could be, could be a progression.
The chair asked a number of questions, if I can get one more in. My sense is that there is at least as much interest in consolidating SUs in line with, and I know it was a different board then, but that board's perspective as there, as there was then. This is another year where legislation was introduced to break it down to 15, again, in a very short period of time, but...
Just, just for the new board members, I, I don't know how many years ago it was, but...
That's where my question's at.
It is, probably three, four years ago, and prior to Act 153, this board had a subcommittee looking at consolidation, that I happened to chair. And there were board members, as well as outside educators throughout Vermont that served on it. We met very briefly, and it became very clear from a lot of people involved in education that this was the wrong way to go. So we packed up our bags and, and as a, I won't say as a result, but subsequent to that, Act 153 and 156 came into place. So we at one point had a very strong philosophical position on, on this issue, but didn't feel like it was contributing to the, to the discussion or deliberations on it.
Could I explain just a little further? One of the things, Stacy, that we, that the board and Bill mentioned before, the State Board of Education has the authority to regroup SU boundary lines. So one of the things that, and this all happened about four years ago around the challenges for change, when we had to cut $23 million from the state education funding, that we started looking at, are there ways to make the dollar go further? Being that we're in a statewide property tax system now, that everybody's taxes are pooled in and then distributed to schools, it's different than it was pre-Act 60. We looked at then, what is the opportunity that we're going to use? So I decided that we would use whenever a superintendent leaves, and that SU had fewer than 1,200 students. And the 1,200 students is a number that has been used in several bills about the size of a school district. So any school district that had fewer than 1,200 students and had a superintendency opening...
Supervisor union.
Supervisor union, that had a superintendency opening. We, I came to the board and asked if the board would approve to have them do a study. And that list that you have, that came in that packet, you have, I don't know, there must be half a dozen or more on there. We have continued that. The challenge will be, as Vaughn said, and when Vaughn and I go to these... The challenge will be, as Vaughn said, and when Vaughn and I go to these meetings or when I go to these meetings, it's not like people are welcoming with open arms. Typically go in there and sharing with them information that many of them don't want to hear. So it's not, it's not something that people are enthusiastic about. However, there are also the realities that our enrollments are dropping statewide. Another 1% this year, about 20% in the last 16 years. Our per pupil cost, however, continues to rise. This year, a 6 cent increase on our statewide property tax while our declining, enrollment is declining. And then, all of a sudden, those costs impact all of us. It impacts here at CBU, it impacts Burlington, it impacts South, you know, Wyndham County, because our costs are continuing to go up. Then what happens, and I think Vaughn alluded to it briefly, was that you get legislators in the last two or three days coming up frantically with some way of reducing costs. Not always good ideas, because they are unable or unwilling to look at the big picture. And the big picture is that we have too many superintendents, we have too many central offices, we have too many school districts, we have a staff-to-student ratio that is driving costs. And part of that is a natural, again, this is not only my opinion, but also the facts that have done, folks who've studied this. We are a rural state, so of course, there are going to be situations that lead to that. At the same time, we have also many other situations that, without looking at a school, can't we take a supervisory union, which is the Act 153 model, form it into an SD with one school board, one superintendent, and there could be a lot of benefits there? But none of those have really taken traction. So my, that's why I continue to bring to the board new ones. The question that I still have in my mind is, I'm out there doing all of this work. That's pretty hard work. Our agency quite often gets assaulted by folks because of it. What's going to happen when I bring you one? And you're going to be seeing Baton Kill pretty soon. You're going to be seeing Windsor Northwest at some point. After all of that, I'm not sure how much further I'm going along with this, because not knowing how the board is going to react.
We had one last month.
Orange East?
Yes, but I'm saying actually after the study's done.
After the decision.
Right.
So can I ask my fellow, so thank you so much. For those who are new, I think that was really helpful, at least for me. I guess my question is, besides the things I can obviously guess at, can someone give like a three or four, like the three or four biggest reasons people do not like the idea? Because I think if your question is, "How might we react?", it'd be helpful for me to know, what is the reaction? And I can guess people are concerned, is it about delivery of services? Is that students having resources, that people protecting jobs? Is it, what's the, what are the big obstacles?
Well, the irony is, what you often hear is two words, "local control." And then you look at what local control actually exists or what it means. And this is an opinion. There's not a lot of substance.
Yeah, our SU went through a first phase of the study. This is Addison Central. And one of the things that we heard consistently amongst the smaller communities is a loss of the connection to their center of town, their elementary school. That's where everything takes place. And I would say that that's probably, in our area, the single biggest thing.
But just a quick, we're not talking about closing schools. This is never...
Well, I realize, but that's the reaction. So there's a learning curve to that. And the fear is that if you go to one board, you know, in other words, this town, which has full control over itself, getting to the local control issue, then they have one vote on a 13-board. And so that they lose that. So, and you can modify that, you can change it so that it requires a different vote to close that school, but that's an educational piece. So I think that might be the time piece that you're talking about that needs to happen through this process.
Margaret?
I just got a question, something you said, Bill, that I want to think through. So it's possible to reorganize supervisory unions and reduce superintenances. Is it possible to do that while leaving local school boards and local voice in decision-making? So leaving school districts intact? I think that in Vermont, when I look at states nationally, it's an asset to have community members giving opinions and making decisions and being as involved as they are in school boards. They may have limited power, but I think it's a huge asset for the state. So is there a way to preserve that, which doesn't cost anything, or very little? And reduce costs, which is the driver of this, by reorganizing?
No, 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 no. Better programs for kids. That's the number one. It's not about cost, it's about opportunities for kids.
Redrawing supervisor union boundaries does not change the autonomy of the local districts. They still exist, they're still there. The effort that Armando's been looking at is limited to the extent to which we can go, because there are some very small supervisory unions that just doesn't seem to make sense to have a superintendent or even a part of superintendent. So that makes sense to put them with another supervisor and make it a modest size. There have been some proposals to go to 14 supervisory unions or even 30, but without reducing the number of districts, you make it a huge administrative task for one superintendent then to manage 10 or 15 districts.
Which is what happened in Addison Central. They went two years without a superintendent. And here's Middlebury, should be one of the top districts in the country for somebody to come to, couldn't find a superintendent. Why? Because you have nine, 12, 13 boards. I'm not even sure what the numbers are.
We're only looking at, we're only looking at a few combinations of SUs, which we think would still be manageable for an administrative team to handle without reducing the number of districts.
So is there a way to look at roles and responsibilities of superintendents and redefine that? Is there a way to look at leadership differently to preserve local decision-making?
There have been some great discussions about reorganizing and whose roles are what, leaving the boards in place, but changing their roles and moving some of the administrative functions more to the superintendent's office. Great discussions on this.
We need Jeb Spalding in part of our studies, and I'm going to use, you look at Jeff, because he was, I think, might have come from him or one of his superintendents, to look at a school district, take an SU, make it a school district, one board with representatives from each community, so there's still that local connection. However, still have a school-based board or district board that deals with the local cultural, historical issues that are important for a community. But to have every community have a school board is not in the best interest of kids, I think, in programs for kids, and very inefficient.
Why is it not in the best interest of the kids?
It's not in the best interest of the case, because we're duplicating services in districts over and over again. And you have local boards who are choosing to do certain things that may not be, that if they were working with others, could provide more resources for kids in schools. Vaughn, Steve, go ahead.
Steve, I'm from the School Boards Association. This is a, this is a core conversation that's been going on in this state for a very long time. And I do think it's well worth your time, perhaps at your retreat or some other time, to really immerse yourself in this. We would love to be part of the conversation. Obviously, to move forward on these issues, we, the local boards in the state and the SU boards in the state need to be fully engaged to try to find a path through it. There's two, it's a very different conversation. The issue of reds or the, in essence, the elimination or the melding of local school boards is a very different conversation than the rearrangement of the boundaries of SUs, which you all have the authority to do. The SU conversation, I think there is a place to go and a way to think about that. And at the core of it is the question of what is a superintendent? And what do we expect of a superintendent? You can, you know, there have been proposals all kinds. There was one last Tuesday night at 7:00 in the legislature, an hour before they adjourned, to go to 30. You know, why 30 as opposed to 50 as opposed to 15? But it happened to be the proposal at that point. But in the middle of all those conversations, we continue to not come to grips with, is the superintendent the educational leader? Are they a regional business leader? I mean, there's all kinds of models that you could come up with. And that issue has to be addressed at some point if we're going to do anything with the boundary redrawing. I also, Armando will be coming to talk with you in the near future.
Oh, I know, because Steve and I, you know, I'd love to talk to you about it.
But this whole issue about how we go about these studies that are being done under the auspices of the board, there are three or four or five of the ones that are under orders now, maybe four, who are struggling because their neighbors don't see themselves as having any obligation to be part of the conversation. And so there may be a way we need to change that conversation so the neighbors are as beholden to the process as the person that's under the order.
Great point.
And the last thing I just want to mention is that it is a big deal to merge supervisory unions. I've been working with the ones that are going to be actually culminating the merger on July 10th. And it's actually July 1st, but their first meeting is July 10th, and they'll be inviting the leadership here. But, you know, they spent two years in planning, and then they've spent a year in implementation, which is redoing a policy manual, redoing personnel manuals, merging employment contracts, getting everybody under the same work rules, rethinking your whole organizational structure. It's a similar accounting system. I mean, the mechanics of merging two SUs are huge. And so although we can talk about it fairly simply, so just there needs to be a recognition of what's involved here. It's not just redrawing lines. But we would love to be part of a conversation whenever this board takes it.
Well, at the end of today's meeting, we're going to be setting the agenda for a board retreat. I've added that to the list, and if we do do that, we certainly want you folks to be part of that conversation. Jeff?
Jeff Francis with the Superintendents Association. I wasn't certain whether or when to weigh in, because frankly, it's a conversation that I've been a participant in for quite a long time now. But what I wanted to say to the State Board is that I think that no one is better positioned to grapple with this issue than you are. And Steve, when you were talking about the fact that in the wake of Act 153, we asked the State Board to sort of go at ease while that law took effect, as you were speaking, frankly, personally, I was sitting there wondering whether I regretted the action of asking you to wait. And here's why.
Make sure that goes in the minutes, you know?
Here's why.
It's on camera.
I think that this conversation that you're having right now ties back to the conversation that you were having about education quality standards. Because I don't think the issue is what the governance structure is. I think the issue is whether we can, as a state, meet the educational needs for every single student, given the structures through which we're trying to deliver. And I don't want to render judgment on that, but somebody needs to be thinking about it. And what I know, because I operate in a bunch of different circles, is that people who do not consider education their top priority, like the State Board, like local school officials, like local school districts or supervisory unions, they very, very quickly go to the cost side of the equation. And they draw in their mind economies of scale, and they think of this not in terms of what we're accomplishing for our kids, but they think of it in terms of tax rates. Now, tax rates are really important, but it doesn't matter whether you have the most expensive education system in the country or the least expensive. If you're not educating kids to their highest potential, then you're not doing your job. So I think all too often, we go to discussions about what the structure should be. I think we need to refocus the conversation on how you provide the best opportunities for kids. And if you can provide the best opportunity for 85,000 kids, over 330 individual units of delivery, then I would say by all means, go do that. But if you can conclude that you can provide a better opportunity for kids through some other delivery model, that's what we ought to be talking about. And so I would urge you, when you have the conversation in June or whenever you have it, that you focus on what it is you want to accomplish for kids and what the best delivery structure is to deliver that, not how much does this cost? And, you know, can we gain monetary savings through some form of merger or consolidation? The reason that I say that is because the latter has been the focus for too long, as far as I'm concerned, and it hasn't gotten us very far. So I think you might want to reframe the analysis and then use that as a starting point. Thank you.
Please.
Bill?
Jeff gave me a good introduction here to my comments, and I'm finding myself asking, what are we trying to accomplish with this conversation again? What is our goal? And if we look at educational outcomes, regardless of what measure we look at, we're in the top five. When we look at our social indicators, we're also in the top five. So the question becomes, what are we trying to fix? And I'm not sure that we've defined what it is we want to fix. Consolidating services has some economy of scale stuff, and I think that makes sense and is something we should do. But in terms of educational improvement, is that our biggest problem with education test scores is our achievement gap. Achievement gap is actually reduced when you have small schools and when you have small districts. I mean, there's, Craig Haley has done a huge amount of research on that. It's the smaller your school unit, the less achievement gap you've got. So it may be one of the most efficacious things we could do. And so I'm just not sure what it is we're trying to do.
Can you give us some information about what "small" means in his mind versus what "small" is in Vermont? Because I think there's two different... When you make those statements, I want to see some information that goes along with that.
Craig Haley, Ohio University, they're called the Matthews Studies, and he's done them in a half a dozen different states.
See that as a board? Because again, when we had the gentleman from Syracuse who came and talked about small, the average size, we're small even in small states. So I think that's, Bill, I'm just asking for clarification.
Yeah, well, you interrupted me there.
Okay, I know, but I want some clarification.
The fellow that you were talking about from Syracuse, he saved the money. Bill, what's his last name? I forget.
I did too.
Want him to interrupt you again?
No.
Yeah. Basically, he got that because they consolidated two small schools into one and eliminated staffing. And if you're going to save money, the way that you do that is to eliminate staffing, because that's where 85% of the budget is. And anytime you get into, and if you're talking about the money situation, it does drive you there. But what I'd like to see, and I was having this conversation with Bill Talbot here during the break, is the legislature did pound us fiercely about educational cost. And it remains a mystery to me why we have educational costs without, like we have, and why they've been increasing over the last 10 years. And what I'd like to see is some kind of decanting the chart of accounts, plus some other things to look at, special education, staffing ratios, number of aides that have been added. I'd like to know where those increases have come from. Was it health insurance? To what degree was health insurance a factor in all of this? But until we understand what has been driving those costs up, then we're basically not going to come up with a solution.
I can give you a 60-second answer. If you look at our costs, not per student, just our costs going up, that's a national trend, because the federal government, you know, all of these new measurements, all these new studies cost money. Where we start to stand out is when you combine a general overall trend gross with a declining enrollment, and you put those two together, and you get per pupil increases that really shoot out. But if you look at simply spending on education in Vermont and don't think about the student dimension, we look at everybody else. And the reason everybody else is increasing is the same reason we are. They know how to do more things with special needs children, and in Vermont, we do it very, very well. They are demand, I mean, I'm only exaggerating slightly, but students are going to have the ability to correlate what third-grade teachers typically ate for lunch when they were in third grade with the performance of their children. This ever, never-ending deluge of requests for marginal information from the federal government is part of what boosts administrative costs. And again, the reason it boosts Vermont is because we have lots of small districts that need to report.
Which is a pain for one Von Altimus.
Oh, no, I don't have to do that anymore. It's a pain for one Aaron Burgdorff. Used to be a pain for me. And it is also a pain for business managers. I think you have a better sense than most of what business managers are going through. And the number who, particularly of newer ones, who are flat out burning out, don't even make the first year, because it has become that hard and because they work seven days a week.
But you're saying that our cost, if we don't do the per pupil, if we just do the inflation index of total dollars, is about the same of whoever everybody else is?
What would you do to contend with all of it? And the overview is educational, political, fiscal, and demographic. Once we have completed that session, I just checked with Steve, we'll send you the link to that situational analysis so that you can look at it yourselves. We're not asking people to form Steve's impression, or my impression, or your impression. We're just trying to give them an objective data set that allows them to conceptualize what they might do as school district leaders. So we have a lot of work to do in this area, and our associations are committed to helping people do this work. Tomorrow night's event is an effort to try to do that, and I think that you will... work. Tomorrow night's event is an effort to try to do that, and I think that you will find the situational analysis, which again, is an objective endeavor, useful as well. So we'll send that to you.
We appreciate that. And we'll talk about it later this afternoon, but it looks like we are going to probably put this on the retreat agenda, and we'll... So you're off on vacation when, Vaughn?
From, well...
Assuming it gets approved by your board.
Yeah, I'm not sure whether...
Other than that, I'm going to be sick. The 27th is a holiday, the 28th is a pension date.
So you'll be back in time for the June.
Oh, I'll be back way before that.
Quick summary of the update?
Yes.
July 1, you'll go from 277 districts to 273. You'll go from 46 supervisor unions to 45. That's a start.
Four years' worth of that.
We're going to stand in recess until after lunch. Remember, you've been given a ticket for lunch. We do have to appear on time at... Excuse me. Okay, Bill, if I start?
David.
We are on agenda number eight, a request for change in the SU board composition at Chittenden South Supervisory Union. Why don't we quickly go around the table, and Mark, you're going to start?
I think that with the permission of Colleen McKinnon, who is the chair of the Supervisor Union Board here in Chittenden South, I'll give a brief introduction.
Okay.
We are waiting also, or David Rath, who asked the question right before lunch, timing.
Yes.
He is expected back as well. He is the chair of the, am I right, CDU board?
Champlain Valley Union High School Board.
And a local attorney.
He may have gotten caught up in the office when he went back.
Should we wait for him, or can we proceed?
I think we can proceed.
Okay. All right, Mark, why don't you...
Set the table here. So we suggested to you that this be a discussion item today, because we think it poses, first of all, because there have been a series of 261D waiver requests over time, and I'd like to go through them briefly. You've received four formally, this is the fifth. You've acted favorably on those four. They are materially different, in our opinion, than the one you have before you today. And you also will see in a moment that a sixth was received on Friday of last week. If you look at this grid, and I think it's probably better for us not to work off the grid right now...
Is this the one that Carol just passed out?
It is. And on the top of one side of it, you will see that where it says Wyndham Central SU, right below that, there's a title that says Adjustment to SU Board. This is a brief synopsis of the six requests that I just referred to, but I would suggest that we keep this as a reference tool, and that we work off of the white sheet and just a quick explanation on my part. So, Chittenden South SU, and here's David.
We're just starting.
David Rath.
You're fine.
David Rath, the board chair here at the CDU. So CSSU is composed of six districts, the Union High School, and then five elementary districts. Five of the six districts operate schools. The one that does not is St. George. Therefore, under Section 266 of Title 16, its board is statutorily and presumptively composed of three board members from each of the five districts that operate schools, and one board member from St. George. So 16 in all. The request that is before you today is to add an additional board member, make a fourth board member for the CDU board, so that the SU board would then go to 17. And we've got the folks here who are going to explain the rationale for the request, but very briefly. I think they will indicate that they feel it would create a greater degree of proportionality, because there are more students here at CDU. It would up the representation of CDU on the board from 19 to 24%. They, in fact, have 32% of the students, and it would also improve efficiency. That's what their application requests and suggests. So just very briefly, the statute that would allow you to grant a waiver here is 261D. You've done it four times in recently, pretty quick succession. In North Country, which has 13 districts, they were having troubles getting a quorum together, also partly because their districts are pretty far-flung. So back in 2000, they had received an initial waiver from a much earlier state board, and then again, recently, they received a waiver. And functionally, what they do is they have, instead of having three from every district, they have two from every district. But we also gave them, you also gave them, the option to elect a third alternate, so that if one of the two members cannot easily attend the meeting, a third one can get there. So that, for their purposes, solves what they were having, which was difficulty getting a quorum. With respect to Southwest Vermont SU, quite recently, they were allowed to do the same, basically go from three per district to two per district, and have an alternate. And I say "an alternate" because we may be getting a request down the pike where North Country wants to go to two alternates, but so far, all the alternates you've approved have been a single alternate per district. In Orange North SU, they did not ask to have their district board composition reduced. They still have three members from each district, but they were permitted by you to have an alternate. And again, the purpose was to make sure that there are quorums there. Finally, an interesting one, a little bit different, is in the Two Rivers SU, which is the new SU that's being created on July 1, from the remaining districts from Windsor Southwest, which, I don't want to say spawned, but which produced our first red. That red is actually being reassigned to Rutland Bennington. And so the remaining four districts of Windsor Southwest are merging on July 1 with the three districts of Rutland-Windsor. And so what we did there at their request was to allow for a 60% majority vote to be required in order to hire or fire a superintendent, and in order to pass the budget. And the purpose there was that the three districts in the existing SU were concerned that the four districts come in would overwhelm and outvote. So you put a 60% majority in a senatorial solution or filibuster-type situation. And so that's what you've done so far. What you have before you today is quite a bit different, because it's the first time that what I call rebalancing is being requested. In other words, changing the proportionality amongst the existing districts. We have been seeing, you've been seeing, this rather rapid increase in these kind of filings. As I said, you've got a sixth one that was just filed by Addison Central. We need to get some clarification on that, but we think it's going to be consistent with the previous four, and not exactly the same as the one that's before you today. And again, you may have another request coming from North Country. So the question, I think, in our mind, and there's no formal recommendation to you here today, other than the fact that it would be a discussion followed by a vote next month, the question really, I can put it one way, is, you know, are we getting to the point where the exceptions are swallowing the rule? And if so, are we in a situation where you might want to put this on your list of legislative suggestions, rather than just trying to exempt the statute out of existence? So I think I'll stop there and hand things off to...
So to be clear, we've approved four of these in the past.
That's correct, in the very recent times.
And have not changed the total number of members of the board?
In no case have we done that. That's correct.
But what we're being requested today to do is to add an additional board member, unlike what we've done in the past.
That is correct.
I just wanted to make that clear.
I'm Colleen McKinnon. I'm chair of the Chittenden South Supervisor Union Board, and I'll let David Rath introduce himself.
That's my name. David Rath, I'm chair of the CDU board, and I'm happy to tell you that we passed a bond to recalibrate our HVAC system. So when you meet here next year, it will not be as cool, and we will have saved money in the process.
So, just to...
Thank you. I mean, you got yourself off to a good start.
So just to provide some context, the Chittenden South Supervisor Union, it's the largest supervisor union in the state. We've got over 4,000 students, about 500 employees. The total budgets among all the districts, it's close to $70 million. So it's quite a large supervisor union. And we've also made significant efforts over the past 10 to 15 years to really consolidate what we can, to centralize those services that make sense, and keep local that which makes sense for the more local. We've, you know, centralized our negotiations, all happen in one place, transportation, HR, technology, professional development, our student services, food services. So our, you know, our operations and our educational leadership divisions of the SU have really gone as far as they can towards consolidation while still maintaining our local districts. So the way that this conversation came up is that because we have such a high-functioning supervisor union board with good representation, occasionally, an issue might come up where we had to really pay attention to a board, and sometimes it might be Champlain Valley Union High School Board, or it might be another board in a different situation, where we have to think about the whole, and think about what our decisions would mean for a local board. With the high school board, because they have such a large ADM, and we might divide some of our, we might assess the local school districts based on ADM for different purposes. And sometimes, if we adjusted our decision-making related to budget, for example, and I'm sure David could think of an example or two, sometimes we had to just step back and say, okay, do we, are we giving enough attention to the high school board in this situation, and do we understand that the K, pre-K8 boards might have a very different role here than the 9-12 boards, or the high school board that pays attention to grades 9-12. We really...
Hmm.
Still have bells, don't we? We really try to think as a pre-K12 district, but there are some times that we need to think about 9-12 being very different from pre-K8. This discussion came up a few times over the past few years, and we decided to put it out to our supervisor union board as a quick discussion matter. Then we decided to send it back to the local boards for discussion, just to see if there might be some issues we hadn't been thinking of. Some people thought it was just an easy thing to do, very simple. We now realize it's far more complex and has different implications at the state level. But overall, and it wasn't unanimous, overall, our board's members have felt that this was an adjustment that made sense for our particular local context.
So both, pardon the interruption, both the supervisor union board and all the local school boards have approved this request?
We put it to discussion at the local level, and essentially a straw vote. We didn't do votes at the local level, but straw vote at the local, they had the discussion first, then we brought it back to the supervisor union board, and the SU board had a vote last week.
And the individual school districts?
Are fine with it.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And was the vote at the supervisor union unanimous?
No.
It was, it was all of the, there were no no votes. There are two abstentions. I was sick at home in bed, so there were only 13 votes in favor. So it was 13 in favor, two abstentions, and one ill out of 16 votes.
I did not vote.
Fifteen.
So, you know, for the, to think about what it means to have three members from a five-member board at the supervisor union board level with such a high-functioning board, it means that when we have a discussion at the SU board, and we go back to the locals, for the most part, we have the majority on board with whatever discussion is going on. And so that it's a majority at the local level, three of the five board members might be on board with whatever decision might be coming up. With the high school board, they have an 11-member board with only three members on it. So the three go back, and they've got to try to convince the eight others of whatever brilliance we've had at the SU board. And so, you know, that's really part of our rationale as well, is to build up the number of people at the high school board who really have a good understanding of what's happening at the SU board. But David should speak to that.
And certainly, that is part of the rationale for the CDU board, but we also, we are, the CDU board is a very active, very talented board, and we think of this as enhancing the function of the CSSU board as well, by sharing some of our talent. But if I may, I am a little more pragmatic about all of this. The, this, what you're looking at is governed by Statute 261. It gives absolute discretion to the Board of Education to make this decision. There are three criteria. Is it going to be efficient, and is it going to enhance the efficiency and effectiveness of the operation? It must not result in any disproportionate representation, and that's obviously not going to happen. And is it otherwise in the public interest? Given what Colleen has told you about how CSSU board is kind of at the lead in this consolidation of allocation of services, we think that putting another member from the CDU board can only enhance that effectiveness and efficiency. And accordingly, we think it's obviously in the public interest to do so. We would encourage the board to look at this issue purely for CSSU, to separate it from whatever you might think you might be doing going forward, because this is just an issue for increasing, we think, the efficiency and effectiveness of our supervisor union board, and the effectiveness and efficiency of the CDU board. The, if the state board believes that there are other issues or alterations to be made down the road, then certainly that's your decision. But we would like you to look at just this particular request.
Unless I'm wrong, state statute establishes how the supervisor union boards are formed.
Correct.
And granted, we have the authority under this section of the statute to make an exception to that law.
Mm-hmm.
Curious why you chose to come here, as opposed to seek an amendment in the state statute?
Again, we're looking at our supervisor union and our local boards, and we're looking...
It's unique, so...
Yes. We're looking at what's, what is efficient and effective for us.
It's really, it's a supervisor union board decision, and, you know, once we decided that that was the way to go, that we wanted to add another CDU member, then of course you have to go and see what the rules are.
Right.
And then we understand that it's the state board who makes that decision.
Honored, Bill, did you have anything to add before I open this up?
The history is not really clear, but the three members comes, the default provision for town school districts for board makeup is three. Later, the law was changed to allow two more to be elected to make it five. I think many boards, town boards, have gone from three to five, but the SU representation was never changed. So, and then after that came union schools, or school districts. And so I'm, my suspicion is that the statute is out of whack, with what changes have occurred over time.
Okay. Vaughn, did you, I want to let the panelists...
I guess my only response would be, I can understand why, from your perspective, your situation is unique. It isn't hard to imagine the bulk of union districts making a similar request to the board on really, really similar grounds. So just think that when the board acts, it ought to be whatever.
Well, even town districts, we just quickly looked at Woodford versus Bennington. Woodford has 30 students, and Bennington has 600 or something like that.
And they get three and three.
Each has three.
Nope.
This goes back a number of years to when Bill Reedy was in Mark's position, but the one-person, one-vote court case came out, which called for proportional representation. And some senator, whose name I've forgotten, said... And some senator, whose name I've forgotten, said the two sixty-one is not proportional representation. And we had to attest that all of the districts were in fact, in the supervisory union, were proportional. Whatever happened to that? It seems like it may have been, the issue may be resolved by law.
The, the bright line in the current case law is that the, the one-person, one-vote constitutional case law is limited to elected boards. And so it has been tested, for example, the SU piece has been tested. And because they are not elected boards, and by that it means elected by the people...
By their board itself.
By their boards, that they are not governed by one person, one vote. I think the data collection that was requested by the legislature was in the context of union school districts. Now, these are districts, these are not SUs. And my understanding is the following thing happened, I know there was legislation, I think there were three things ordered to, to be done. Number one, the data was to be collected, what the proportionality was within the union school districts, it was to be reported, secondly, to the legislature, and third, the legislature was going to take action in a manner that was consistent with case law. The first two happened. History does not record why the third did not. And my, I might speculate that, yes, there was a fair degree of disproportionality that was discovered, and it might have been deemed to be too difficult of a political thing to confront. But, so as it stands right now, the case law does not mandate one-person, one-vote in the context of SU, SU boards. I'll say one more thing about that. With Act one fifty-three and Act one fifty-six, devolving greater degrees of control over education to SUs, an argument can be made that, at some point, depending on how much power you give them, principles of one-person, one-vote would apply. And if it were to be tested, one of the questions you could hypothesize about is, are we there yet? You know, if they were to be tested, would, you know, would the next court decision basically say, because SUs are now so much centralized, because in a year they're going to be required to all provide special ed services, or actually Vaughn's going to modify that, but in a year they're all going to be required to do transportation, okay? If, you know, if, if that doesn't change, are we at a point where one-person, one-vote should be implemented there? Or might be thrust upon us in a judicial fashion? The current case law says no.
John Marie.
I, I totally hear your dilemma. I sit in a board locally that has Woodford with three and Bennington with seven members, and I sit on the Mount Anthony board that has eleven members. I'm also chair of the SU. We have three members for each one, we were one of these that asked to go to two because we couldn't meet a form. We also have centralized services in all of those issues. The issues that come up around what would happen in a district is that Bennington pays the bulk of the money in terms of what the high, how the high school runs and of the SU through the Mount Anthony assessment and through the SU assessment. They would love nothing more than to have five, six seats on that SU board. And I think one of the, the issues is around the state is that this is something that really needs to be looked at. I think, I called the Vermont School Boards Association because many, we had heard, again, heard, many school districts had alternates. So a lot of them were operating as that. When we called Bill Reedy X amount of years ago, he said no. So once we found out we really couldn't do it, we really didn't do it. So it became difficult. And it is often difficult around the table when the board, when the three members that spend the most money have the same say as Woodford with twenty-seven children, and three board members and a teaching principal, we tried to work, you know, as a group in what's the best interest for the curriculum K-12. But I really think, and I hear this a lot also at budgets, we also have a town that didn't pass a budget, why can't we vote on the SU budget? And that is a huge issue around the state. I think the more you put into the SU budget and the more services and the bigger the budget gets, the citizens want to know why they don't have a say in that budget. Why don't they have a say in the members that are on the SU? I think it's time for a change. I think it's time for a big change. I think that if people are going to vote for, if, if the legislator's going to heap everything into the SU budget and the citizens don't have the ability to actually vote on that two, three, four million dollar budget, except through, as people have said, in the assessment they're given, it's, it's problematic at this point, I think. So I personally couldn't support this because it would change the composition, and I would actually then encourage everybody around the state to do the same. And, and from where I sit, I have to look at the whole state as well as what is coming before us. So that's my...
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, I too am an SU chair. And...
So maybe this chair will rule these two, two votes out of order then.
The abstain.
And, and we...
Discussion only.
We actually just got added to the list.
Oh.
So, and I, and I certainly feel, you know, feel your frustration. One of the things that came to mind is, one of the reasons you wanted this was for more engagement from the high school board. I, I, I come from the high school board, and quite often we have more than three people coming to our SU meeting. And so, as a matter of clarity, what you're looking for in terms of engagement is a vote as opposed to real engagement. And I'm, and I'm guessing you, you, you want to get a fourth person there so you can get four people back to the high school board to convince them that whatever the wisdom was, I think those was your words, that the full board came up with was, was going to be easier to sell to the high school board.
I mean, that, that's part of it, and, you know, there are different ways to look at the whole picture, but if you go in one door, that's, that's one way to look at it, is you get four more people back to the high school board and, and maybe able to influence the rest. I mean, one of the things that we do in this SU is we do carousel meetings where the supervisory union board meets, and then we have a common topic, and then the locals meet. So that's generated a culture of conviviality, I would say, among the board members, and so we are often overlapping in our discussions. And we also try to develop common work plans so that our administrators are focusing on the same topic each month for all of our boards. Those efficiencies really help us think as a supervisory union instead of our individual districts. But, you know, as far as the opportunity to sit in on SU board members, on SU board discussions, CVU board members can do that. But the reality is, is that sometimes decisions will come up, and, you know, most of the time it's around budget or some change in the budget, where they don't have as much of a voice as the other board members.
And that's, is that based because of the carousel meeting structure?
No, no, the carousel meeting structure is very useful, it's just...
So the SU board meets at a separate time than the carousel structure?
The carousel structure is such that the SU board meets, we all meet here.
Right.
And in this building.
And then you split off into your own...
And then, and we have a common topic, so that all thirty-four board members are there.
So I guess I'm trying to understand...
And the superintendent has one evening out a week then, that month.
Right. Right. I mean, that's our goal.
If you recall, you invited me right after I was elected, it was the first experience I had with the carousel, and I was very impressed by it.
Well, we, we've heard a lot about it.
And I wonder why more, more supervisory unions don't do that.
Exactly.
Sorry to interrupt.
No. So I guess what I'm trying to, is, is, I'm, I'm real sensitive to the idea that we're, we're reformulating the balance of an SU.
Right.
And, and not that I don't think that we, we shouldn't look at that down the road. My major concern was that it sounded like there was, there was lack of information or, or there needed to be more involvement from the, the high school board. And, and I'm not seeing how the extra vote gets you that.
I'll let David speak to that, but we have, I mean, we don't have the problem of other SUs where people are asking for alternates or, or reducing the number. We have more than enough board members that want to sit on the SU board. That's where people want to be, because that's where the...
That's where the rubber hits the pavement.
Interesting discussions happen there. David?
It, for CVU, it will be helpful in terms of, of bringing a broader perspective for the nine through twelve part of our SU into the CSSU meetings by having four of us with, with four slightly different perspectives. It will help us bringing that information back to our own board meetings with having four sets of ears and, and a greater ability to communicate to the, the other seven people on the board later that, that evening. But I, I, I think it's, it's, it's more than that. It's, it's, I at least think that the, the greater efficiencies will be achieved and greater effectiveness will be achieved by, by having this broader perspective from the nine through twelve. And we work very, very cooperatively, but we need to recognize that there are issues that are different for K through eights and nine through twelves, and, and we need to have adequate representation of those, those perspectives. And, and with our very cooperative and collegial boards, I think this will just enhance the process. And I think the, the vote at the CSSU board is, is indicative of where all of the boards are coming from. I mean, there were no, no votes. It was, everyone was in favor of it that, that voted with two abstentions, and so it's, it's...
Why, and then we're a broad public policy board, the State Board of Education. Why wouldn't we look at this as a, as times have changed and it's time to take a, a, a different view of how the supervisory union boards are shaped? Why wouldn't we look at this from a broader point of view and look at the whole situation as opposed to just, just your situation?
Yeah, if I could just offer our experience with the REDS study and the whole discussion of proportionality, it's such an interesting one. Our study committee came to the conclusion that it really made a lot of sense, and when it came time to voting from the committee, whether or not to bring it out to the communities, we had a tie vote and then decided not to move it forward. And for some of the people who voted against moving it forward, it was the recognition that it would consume so much time by our, by our administrators. Some of us didn't want to put that burden on them because we knew that a couple of the communities would never approve it. Because when you go to one-person, one-vote proportionality, somebody's going to lose, somebody's going to win. And, you know, what, what model of governance do we want? And people like something that's closer to a senatorial model than a representational model by your demographics. So I, I think that's a similar issue that comes up here in this discussion, you know, which is why, to me, the, the grade level proportionality is, is appealing. For us, it works. If CVU had a seven-member board instead of an eleven-member board, it would be perfect, it would, the logic would fit. Now, could you apply those rules around the state?
Have an alternative for us to cut the, the size of that board?
No, I don't think...
I'd love to have just seven people there.
I understand that. I would too.
Well, leave it in this room, right?
It might be an argument in favor of a bicameral governance structure for supervisory unions.
Yeah, right.
Backboard.
I remember being in the, in a position once in my life that I admired the state of Kansas. One legislative body.
It's Nebraska.
It used to be, Vermont used to be here in the candle. Really. Anyway, let's stay on track here.
Can I just, I guess my, I guess I just would question the efficiency, the equation of adding a person equals something being more efficient, which I can see sometimes how that works. I'm thinking about personal experience of having a co-directorship, and in a way it made us, we were a two-headed monster and could do all sorts of things, but we spent so much time catching each other up on what we had done that at some point after four years of a co-directorship at a school said, this is actually less efficient than we thought. So I guess I would just, one more person allows more people to do, touch more things, but then it also, just the communication leaps, I found for us, took so much time. And I don't know that...
Right, so...
I just wonder how you might address it, is more, more people, is that, what, what efficiencies is gained if time might not be one of them?
Well, for full disclosure on the abstentions, they related to a couple of issues, and one would be, you know, does adding another board member make sense because some people believe that smaller boards are more efficient? And the other piece would be related to, it should be legislated and, and not piecemeal waiver by waiver if there's going to be a decision. But overall, you know, generally, people on the boards are, are very much in favor of it. As far as efficiency goes, I, I think one of the things that we spend a tremendous amount of time on, and our superintendent spends a tremendous amount of time on, is identifying roles and responsibilities, and really, where does our work begin and end? And we need to be very clear about that. And so we really work for efficiency as boards, for the most part. I mean, it's always, it's always work.
The, the other way, the, the other place where efficiency comes up is having another talented person in there to undertake the discreet tasks that we allocate out to smaller groups. And, and our chair is, is very good about, about making those decisions and, and making those allocations and having another talented person. I, this is, as you folks obviously know, this takes a lot of time, doing this volunteer work, and, and to have, to have another person available to, with the talent and the desire to, to do these discreet tasks of the smaller stuff and bring it back to the board is just extremely helpful.
Yeah.
Well, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, that's a point worth emphasizing, because if you're trying to get a supervisory union to move forward on a particular agenda, and it makes sense for board members to participate in a study committee on a particular issue, you want enough people to do it. And if you, and you start tapping people too much, you can't get a lot of work done. So it does help.
And, and you, and you need, on many of those discreet issues, you need the perspective from the nine through twelve, and there are only three of us. And, and I hate to confess this to the entire board here, but I don't think I've ever served on one of our chair's discreet units because I simply don't have the, the additional time to be doing that in, with everything else. And this, I, I don't think I'm unique, and I don't think it will necessarily change when I am replaced, but it does give us that greater flexibility and that greater efficiency to make sure that, that nine through twelve perspective is there on those discreet operations.
Well, as, as was outlined earlier, this is a, a different public policy than we've addressed in the past. So this was scheduled today just for a discussion item. We do intend to put this back on the agenda at our June meeting for discussion slash vote. So if there is additional information that you wish to get to us, please feel free to do that, but we will, we will deliberate on this and, and come up with a conclusion on, at our June meeting.
If, if I could just conclude with, with asking that, that when you look at this, look at this from the perspective that this is the first time you've had an opportunity where we've come here and asked for more representation, and we're doing that because it is, these are extremely effective and hard-working organizations, and collectively we think it's going to help us get even better. And, and I realize that you have broader policy concerns going down the road, and I hope you address those, but I hope they do not stand in the way of, of enabling something that, that this supervisory union... and all of our boards would like to see happen. Thank you very much.
Have you identified that fourth member that might be willing to say?
One item that's not on the agenda that I think is okay to bring up that goes along with something that we just discussed. This chart that was handed out by Carol before, if you look on the backside, you look at Windsor Northwest, parentheses, Bethel Rochester. You know, we approved a study that was to be completed by May 2013. It is not, has not been approved, and the question would be, do you wish to extend that deadline? And could we ask, what would be a fair extension?
We're hoping for November. We hope to get it earlier than that. But last time, we were warned by the chair and Dr. Mathis was much too close in the right. So this time, I thought we'd push it out a little bit further.
Let the minutes reflect for once.
Let's not get carried away, Carol. You don't need to put that in there.
There were several things happened. One, it was just very hard to get the contract finished and through the process, which we're still doing so that Normandys could do the work. We don't anticipate that taking much longer. The other was that the boards of Windsor Northwest asked for opportunities to have additional input before we wrote the contract. And that added a bit of time as well. But I think that the biggest factor was the one that you raised at the time. It was a very, very tight timeline and a really busy legislative session.
November, is that what you're recommending? I'd move that if we need a motion.
November 30th, November 1st.
November board meeting.
November board meeting.
Okay. Bill's made the motion to extend the study of Windsor Northwest until November, State Board of Education meeting, 2013. Seconded by Sean Murray. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. It's been approved.
Ron, you'll let John know and those folks, just to let them know that we're doing this.
All right, we'll move on now to Next Generation Science Standards. John Fisher and Tom Alderman.
Gail and Karen coming up too?
Yeah, Kathy and Karen.
Kathy, you're in the middle.
In the middle.
I noticed she was hesitant about going to the senior chair.
John, you got your name on the agenda an awful lot of times where you don't participate.
He's really good at delegating.
I guess.
That is the puppeteer.
Right, puppeteer. That's a good word.
Just for the record, if the three of you would introduce yourselves, that'd be great.
I'm Tom Alderman, Director of the Secondary and Adult Division.
Kathy Renfrew, Elementary Science Assessment Coordinator.
Gail Hall, Middle and High School Science Assessment Coordinator.
Okay.
Okay, so the final version of the Next Generation Science Standards was released shortly after your last meeting, at which the three of us made a short presentation about that topic. And you were provided with a link to those standards in your packet. So this represents the work of many people from all across the country over several years. NGSS is a response, as was the Common Core State Standards, to a recognition that there is room for improvement in the way we provide instruction and a need to hold all students to higher learning expectations. Of course, our knowledge in the arena of science, and therefore, the content of that subject area, has expanded. That alone would suggest a need for review and revision of science standards. But that's not alone what this is about. It's not just about doing more of the same. This represents an effort to more effectively provide science instruction and assessment, engage students more deeply in scientific inquiry and problem solving, to make the learning experience more relevant to students' lives, and to enable all students to develop essential skills through science content. Vermont has been involved in the development of these new science standards since the outset, several years ago. And we know that the process has been very responsive to the ideas of everyone who's been involved, and we're pleased with the resulting product. At the agency, we're moving forward with the development of an implementation plan for these new standards. And we're hopeful that the board will endorse this work so that we can begin to assist schools in the necessary transition. As with the Common Core, the Next Generation Science Standards, if you adopt them, will create a period of time between adoption and the development of new statewide assessments reflecting those new standards. Therefore, we would recommend recognition of this period during which standards, instruction, and assessment come into sync. So Gail and Kathy have been involved with the development of these new standards from the outset, representing the agency and engaging others from the education and business communities. And so they'll be able to respond to any questions you may have. And by the way, the intention is that this would come before you again at your June meeting.
May we would be requested a vote to approve it at that point?
Yes.
Questions? Bill?
Couple of three questions. The first thing is, when I went to the website and looked up the standards and scrolled through them, it said standards which would be applicable to all students. How did they, besides a professional opinion of the scientists and so forth who were involved in that, how was that validated as being necessary for all students? And again, I would go back to what I'd mentioned earlier this morning is, I did in fact get the periodic table in high school and in college, but I have yet to use it. And when I looked at the content, I was looking at, this is a four-year, high-level college prep math program if we're going to achieve these standards. And is that really what we need for students? And how do we know that?
We can give you some information on that. First of all, the framework of standards, this is the document that preceded the standards, that provided the content on which the standards are based, was developed by a committee authorized by the National Academy of Science and the National Research Council of that academy as a subdivision. And the folks that were on that committee represent major universities across the country. They represent educators, engineers, and scientists. So those folks worked for two years to develop this document. As part of what they did, they also asked for research to be done to find out more about just what you're asking. One of the folks, one of the groups that they had actually contacted for that was the American College Testing Service in California. And they have been doing research for over 50 years, they claim, to determine the status of the students that are graduating from high school and what they have, what they are able to excel in and what they, where they have weaknesses. And their research indicated that over the past 10 years at least, that science, which is this bar, is lower than writing, math, and social studies. And so on a national level, the efficiency and proficiency of students that graduate from high school is much lower in science than it is in these other content areas.
Proficiency level is arbitrarily determined for each category?
Yes. There's a different benchmark for each category.
So how do we know that's not a difference between the group making the standard cut, making that decision to put it here as opposed to here?
Well, the standard, I'm not sure how they did their standard-setting process, but in my experience, when you do a standard-setting process, it is a long-term, arduous task that brings in people of all abilities around that content to look at the validity of the assessment and find out where the most appropriate level would be. And for these, it's at a 75% level. So one thing about Vermont is that Vermont is higher. Vermont has a 43% proficiency compared, in science, compared to a national proficiency of 31. And so part of our point is, is that where we want our students to be? Don't we want them to be a little better than 43% proficiency in science understanding across the board? And this was for all students. They also, the committee that developed this document also consulted with the college board organization. And they also felt that all students, that these standards would be appropriate for all students. They're, they did research to show that workforce students need the same skills as students heading to college or to two-year programs or to other learning or training programs. And so they had other groups out there doing research that, which then fed back to them, which then became part of this, which then became the basis for the standards.
Can you give me a source on that?
On which?
On the thing that non-college-bound students need the same level of proficiency as others.
That was an American College Testing Organization research paper that was done in 2006.
I'd be most curious.
Okay. We can send you that citation if you would like.
Thank you.
You know, not as an educator, but today, we dealt with, just today, education quality standards. And then we dealt with teacher leader force, task force. And now, now we're dealing with Next Generation Science. How does this all come together?
Wow.
And if I, you know, I mean, if I was a professor, I mean, I'm sorry to ask the question.
Well, I'll be honest, I really see this as an opportunity. First of all, I see it, especially, I'm going to talk from my knowledge base, which is at the elementary level. It's an opportunity, first of all, for our students to really be doing science again. Science has been usurped recently, and there's lots, I don't have the research with me, but there is lots of research around the fact that science in elementary school really has become almost non-existent nationally. I don't know what that's like, honestly, within the state of Vermont. I'd say that it's probably very.
We're dealing with that right now in a situation, Gail, right now.
So I see it as, as an opportunity for our students. And to get back to Stephen, how does it all come together? One of the really great things I see about the Next Generation Science Standards is that they have really worked hard to make connections to the literacy and mathematics so that those pieces can be intertwined. And I think, as an elementary school teacher, it is so exciting to have the opportunity to really use the science to engage many of those struggling learners, those all students that, you know, finally have the opportunities to be engaged in lots of different opportunities that have not been provided to them.
I don't dispute any of that, but why isn't it all in one place? I mean, why is there this and that and?
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, I think that, just put a candy in my mouth though. I do think that the EQS is sort of the umbrella. We did not have the Next Gen Science Standards yet to be implemented in that. But in our EQS, it talks about the, the schools making sure that they apply their curriculum to the standards. So that's where the science piece fits in there. I'm not sure how it fits into the teacher leader task force because teachers are going to be evaluated, principals will be evaluated on multiple levels. How students attain a science standard may or may not be one of those, unless you're a science teacher. But I do think that these go hand-in-hand with the EQS. This is what, if the board approves this, this will be one of those standards that are embedded into the EQS.
What I struggle with, I mean, I've only been here four years or so, is that we do, there's all kinds of wonderful things happening. But there's this study, there's this study, there's this study, these standards, these standards. And I struggle, you know, in figuring out how it all comes together. If I was working in this profession, I think I'd be going nuts and trying to figure out.
All the teachers.
Let me call on John first.
All right, I'll step up through this.
On the side table.
I think we bring many of these topics to you, and they appear separate. But as we've developed project management approaches at the agency and implementation plans, all of these start coalescing together. Is it a lot of work? Absolutely. And a lot of this work will come about over the next two years. The good news is that we have embraced that continuous improvement cycle. So this is not high stakes. We are not saying that you can't graduate if you don't do all of this. We're not saying that you get put in the bad school jail if you can't do this at a certain level. I think it bears watching, over the next couple of years, as reauthorization comes through, how we will take this system of high-performing education and great opportunities for learning, and how we're going to navigate that, that reauthorization and that federal structure. But, but back at the, at the office, we're bringing these together. Once we bring organization to each of these and we move these along to the approval point, then all the resources are brought together, and that's where this integrated support for learning, the reorganization that we did in 2010 at the agency, that has brought together staff from research, assessments, standards, school improvement, high school, pre-K, sixth, middle school, all of these, these staff members are now coming together around this work. So you're seeing it and as it appears as separate silos coming in here. How we roll it out to the field, once we do this, is through a new statewide professional development learning network that we're working with some of the ESAs on. So that's a quick parachute of what we're.
Margaret?
A variety of things. There is less and less time for teaching science because it's something that has been only peripherally tested, I guess. There's been more and more emphasis on literacy and math. So with, having the standards is one piece, but without the amount of time to teach to the standards and without the professional development for teachers, particularly elementary school teachers around physical science because they're generalists, all the things they might want to teach, then having these high bars, I mean, it makes me wonder where as a department you put your emphasis. And in terms of school quality standards, what does that say to us about where we should put our emphasis? And I don't really know the answer.
You know, Margaret, you could probably almost anticipate what I'm going to respond, is that I see the science as the way to work on that literacy and those mathematics and make that time, and make that time. But the other thing, I do really agree with you, the need for time for professional development and the time for it all to be part of a systemic change is really important.
Krista?
I mean, I was hoping we could talk this at a June meeting, but right now, we have so many different standards. As a teacher, it is unbelievably, just drives you nuts, because now we have Common Core, which is coming through. But we still have frameworks, which has a whole science curriculum within it also. So your frameworks is approved, you have Common Core, which also has science. Now we have another science standard. And so we have standards all over the place. And again, we still have 175 days in which to put this all out. And I think maybe we need to start having that conversation about, well, what are the standards? Can they be consolidated, make them easier to use? Because right now, if I want to go through my standards, it's this thick. And then I go through my IEPs, 504s, this thick. Now I'm going to have personal learning plans, this thick. So that's a stack this high just to make a lesson plan. It's just, it's impossible when you're bringing about, I know you're talking about in the office and the agency of education, bring it to the classroom, and it's just overwhelming. So consolidating those standards, I think is maybe something we talk about. And the standards that we have, are they proficiency-based? Not all of them, but that's where graduation requirements are. So it's just all off. And, and again, that, thinking about 175 days, we're trying to just put all this stuff into 175. And maybe the conversation is, if there's no time, we need to make it. So we need to make more time. If the standards are this high, maybe we need to have a little conversation about how we do that. And I think about it in U.S. history. I'm teaching U.S. history. My great-grandfather was a U.S. history teacher. He had the same one year, 175 days. But that was, you know, before World War II. So I mean, that's, it's just, things have changed. So, I mean, we're still trying to stick it into this old model. So maybe it's the model that needs some tweaking.
So to build on what Kathy was saying before, there's a great commonality now between the skills that are, that we feel, that scientists feel kids need in order to graduate. the skills that are, that we feel that scientists feel kids need in order to graduate and to be successful, in terms of critical thinking, and analyzing, and being innovative, and having opportunities to do this. There's a great overlap between those and the skills in the Common Core, which Kathy was mentioning. Also, these standards would, would replace the framework, is my understanding. So, right now, the great expectations have replaced the framework. And, and these standards are richer, because they are integrated with not only content, but practices that students need to help to get to those critical thinking skills, and also the big ideas that they need to help make sense of this in their real world. So, we have great hopes that these could solve some of those problems, in terms of the breadth and depth that they have within each of the standards that could be applied in the classroom. And, and again, we will, teachers will need professional development in order to help that happen. And that's part of what we were thinking as we had this implementation.
Please, please don't think any of these comments are taking away from all the time and energy.
Oh, no. No, I get it.
Okay. Other questions?
No, I was just going to say the same thing about the critical thinking skills, the scientific, I think almost more so than any other subject. I feel like the science, the science, as an early childhood teacher, I feel like we use those scientific thinking skills, whether we're deconstructing a poem, or talking about classroom dynamics, or whatever, social studies, if we were talking about, we would, any of that, what do you observe, what changes do you see over time, what, what's your hypothesis?
Well, one, like, just a commonality that I, that I so get to, is like, the science, the speaking and listening, the science discourse is something I've been doing a lot, researching. That's in mathematics, that's in, you know, language arts. Speaking and listening, we need just to, to exist and to communicate with each other at all levels, from the time of preschool children, to high school, to adults, to a meeting like this and beyond. So, you know, there are a lot of commonalities. And some of those are the things that I saw as exciting, and, and in terms of, of hoping to, hoping to, to take away some of those time issues. I mean, I guess I've been spouting this, this fact that science can be the vehicle for, for literacy learning for a long time, and here's my opportunity, maybe somebody's finally going to listen.
If I may just add that...
Sure.
I believe that the common thread among the things mentioned by the chair and other things not mentioned, is a desire to affect improved learner outcomes for all students. And we believe that we can do that. The question, and the question is not, should we? The question is how. And it, and our answer to the how question may feel disjointed at times, but we're trying very hard to approach that in a systemic way.
Well, good. I would suggest you get together with Jill Remick before, you know, EQS meets, and make sure all this stuff is in that report as well. Thank you. And John?
Just one quick mention about the framework. Those, those will be recast as Common Core moves forward, and, and next-gen science, if you move forward with that. So, the Vermont framework will now have some parts taken out, and Common Core replaced, next-gen science put in place, and they will become the next-gen Vermont framework. So, that works.
In what document?
You're saying that Crystal will have one document?
One very large.
Yes.
Very large.
I'm waiting for the science. I would say next, early next fall, late summer.
He's going to use a smaller font.
Smaller font, right.
I didn't have a binder thick enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Let me entertain a motion to begin with, and then we'll see if there's any moved by Sean Marie. Is there a second? Second by, by Bonnie. Are you ready for a motion, or Bill?
Couple of quick comments. Thank Pat Gray for her. Did everybody get this, Carol?
Everybody got it.
Okay. Special ed in terms of when all that explains it to me, in terms of independent schools and so forth. But, an item we'll have to come back to, I think, or would recommend, is what do we do about distance learning? Alex Moeller just came out with a report with Gary Miron, that looked at all the virtual learning networks in the nation. And what they're finding is huge attrition, lower achievement, particularly among white students, for that matter, and a tremendous amount of profiteering that's happening. And so, I think that virtual learning is something we need to return to.
Bill, could you be more, and I agree with you, by the way, but specifically, what, what would you like us to return to around virtual learning, so we have a better idea?
What are standards for virtual learning schools? And how do we implement them? That's what I'd like to see. It's, it's wide open, as far as I'm thinking. I'm just seeing that there's these kinds of concerns that are arising as to their effectiveness, and where the money's going. And I noticed in this case that the parents are paying for it all, so it's not public dollars, which makes a difference.
That, that just, at least in Vermont, we try to only accept, or that schools can only accept, distance learning courses that have been accredited. The problem with that accreditation is that there are multiple accreditation agencies.
Some are legit, some...
Well, they're, we're taking them off the federal website. So, the USDA has found them to be, that we're assuming that there's been some background done on them. We don't have the capacity, I know, I mean, I'm not disagreeing with that, but I'm just saying that this is what, but we don't have the capacity to do that. So, I think that unfortunately, you're right. Distance learning classes have a much higher dropout rate for kids, kids not completing it. For some kids, it works really well. For many other kids, it doesn't. Our challenge will be, if, if we get away from that, I know Mark's had looked into this in the past, if we get away from the federal accreditation sort of list, then we would have to look at each one ourselves, and I'm not sure if that's, I mean, it's a question that we need to look at. Is there, is there another way to look at whether these schools are? And I just got something in the mail today, from university, I don't know, Concordia University, PhD and master's programs with teachers of Vermont, out of Phoenix, out of Blue. And I thought it was Concordia, out of Montreal, I said, oh, maybe that's a different story. And how does this get, is that part of the western states, you know, is that approved there? But those are the type of things that we have to be vigilant on, because we just learned this week, John and I, that seventy percent of all the federal loans given out, is that right, John? Go to for-profit or proprietary institutions. We were shocked.
With high default rates.
With high default rates. Right. So, that, I think that goes directly to your point.
This has been news for a while, this is not news to me.
The motion that's on the table is approval of the consent agenda. Hearing no, no other issues, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda has been approved. Moving right along. Chair's report, just a couple of things. First, I guess, as we're going to have a legislative report in a minute, but I want to report that Bill and I spent some time in the Senate Education Committee near the end of April, specifically dealing with independent schools, privatization of independent schools. We left the State House that day having unanimous support in the Senate Education Committee that, yes, this should not proceed, and that there would be indeed a moratorium and no, no special committee to look at this issue in the summer months. Well, as you all know, that's not what happened in the end. There, there is not a moratorium, and there will indeed be a, a special committee to look at this issue during the summer. That, you're chairing.
No, I'm not. Stay bored.
What?
I thought I was honored, I didn't know I was chairing. I thought you were chairing.
No. You're chairing.
Mine, I think, there's so many studies that you've got throughout to do.
Well, we, actually, we learned this yesterday, Stephen, like, yesterday afternoon, we were looking through them, Bill. It was yesterday afternoon when we said, Stephen's going to be chairing this?
Does the chair appoint a member of the committee?
Uh, no.
Your name, but it's always the, the person or designate.
I'm pretty sure it's the secretary.
You can, or you can, you can nominate someone. And actually, Bill, I was thinking about that you might be, I mean, this might be something that you might be interested as well.
I'm on this committee, you're going to appoint him as the chair of the committee?
No, you're the chair, I'm saying that you could, you could also, okay.
All right, well, we'll find that out later for the legislative report. More importantly, we did hold our first, first search committee meeting on, on May seventeenth. It was pretty well-attended by mostly the educational partners. We came up with a job description, a timeline of, of, of the process, and so that, that committee is, is moving ahead. Cooperation is good with the governor's office, and we're, we're off, off and running. And if you want more detail, we can get it, the ads are going out this week, next week? This week, maybe?
After I let my folks know that, that this is going out, yes.
And generally, what we've decided to do is, is to post the, the position on some well-known educational sites nationally. We'll advertise in one Vermont newspaper, but we're, we're, our funds are limited, and we will use what limited funds we have to, to post the, the position nationally. And we've set a, a tentative date of September one, to, to complete our process. Our process, meaning the state board process, and it goes on to the governor's office from, from there.
Can I add something to that? Just that I think that, one thing that I took away from that was encouraging, that we wanted to, to not just throw out a, a blanket thing and just hope that somebody saw it and wanted to come to Vermont, that we all have such different spheres of influence, and wanted to help push out that, that possibility into different communities. So, if you have a shining gem in your community that you think would, would maybe, or, you know, or that used to work within Massachusetts or something, that we want to use our, all of our different pools, right, to move that.
Or if you have some connection with some organization that, that, you know, might, might want to look into this.
Did, did you, did you speak to the governor's office about money for advertising, since ours was limited?
Yes, yes. And what they have, just to bring everyone up to date, we're in FY fourteen, and when we did the first search last year, we used our full six thousand dollars that was in the line item for that. What the administration has, has said, is that they will find somewhere else another six or seven thousand dollars, and, and, and get the money to the agency of education. So, and that's about what we're going to be spending, somewhere in that neighborhood. But, and, and, and great cooperation from the administration in finding the money.
How, how do you handle a situation where somebody might be interested in, in the job, but they're not sure they want to make it public?
Okay. Good question. The, when, when, when the search committee meets, that's all an executive session, so none of the names are, we, we go into the process saying this, this is a private process. You know, this is in, and under, under the Vermont open meeting law, we can do that because it's a personnel matter. So, our, all our meetings will be, when we get, it wasn't the other day, because we weren't dealing with names, but we start dealing with names, they'll all be in the executive session. Now, at some point, the search committee is going to come up with a recommendation. Under the law, we're to supply the governor with three names. We're going to have to find a way to include the, the rest of the board. Probably, we will have a special meeting in executive session, get your approval before we, before the, the three or more names onto the governor. But the names will not, not be public. The last time around, they were, they became public when the search committee brought the names back to the, to the State Board of Education, and we voted on them in open meeting. And so, and that may have, some folks think that may have discouraged some applicants. I'm not sure that that's true, but that's one theory. And that, so we've, we're, we're going to make sure that you all have a say in this, obviously, it's not just the search committee, but it'll, it'll, from, from us to the governor, the names will be, will be private.
Thank you.
A little lengthy answer. Yes, Margaret?
Mine's to sort of add to that, what is the role of non-committee board members in the process? You know, where are the points where the board is included?
Well, well...
At the end? I mean...
You, that's what we did, I think, the last time. We may, as time goes on, I mean, depending on the number of applications, we may hold an, an executive session at the end of a regular board meeting, and, and, and give you an update of where we are with, 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 with applications. We're, you know, we're, we're pretty open to make sure you're, you're kept up to date.
So, I would encourage the committee to consider the role of the larger board, and to give opportunities for input along the way, not just at the end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But I, I do want to stress, and, and Mark has, has provided the opportunity here, I do want to stress that it, the process needs to be private and confidential for, for everybody's sake. That's really all I have.
Did you have more, the secretary's report? Just wanted to follow up with Bill, something about the, where we are with the NCLB. We hear some of the same things you're hearing, Bill, that there is a, there was a Democratic proposal, but now we're hearing that there's a Republican from the House, on the House side. We have less, because of Bernie Sanders' involvement with, in the Senate, we're much more, and John, fairly regularly, with Dave Cohen, keeping him abreast and, and back and forth, less about the House side. But what we're hearing, even from CCSO, is that something may occur, but I, but I doubt that very much when I look at the differences right now between the two, excuse me, the two parties. And if anything, education is probably one of those places that they come closer to having some sort of consensus than in other areas. So, and that's what we're all waiting for, is what is the, what is, what's the roadmap for the next ten, fifteen years for schools? Because we're now in one that expires theoretically, two thousand and fourteen, without something coming into place. The whole waiver process was Secretary Duncan's way of trying to get the, our elected officials to move by making some, some of these waiver conditions, which he is allowed to do, but I think part of that was also maybe to get them to move along, because I don't think they particularly like some of the things that he's recommending from both sides. So, we don't really know, I don't have anything more than just saying they continue to meet, we continue to hear rumors, but nothing yet.
What's the status on the early ed race to the top grants and the conditions, and have we heard back what the rules are?
Great, we have, we are working with AHS to prepare, we've already got, actually, Ally Richards was here today. She's going to be leading the sort of coordination of the two agencies to provide a, a winning grant for early ed. The, the RFP has not come out yesterday, or day before yesterday, they came out with some guidelines. John, was that right?
Some of the accountabilities, which were very similar to the last one, but we haven't seen the onerous, like, consequences that the original race to the top.
Right. It, it's not supposed to have any onerous consequences, it's supposed to be more about encouraging states to do, have a stronger, more robust pre-K program. What we're hearing, again, what we're hearing is that sometime mid to late August, the RFP will come out with somewhere around an October date to, to submit the application. There are several things different that I think we want to, that we'll have. Number one is have a professional grant writer. I think last time, we did not, we tried to do it internally, internally meaning at the state level, not the department, and that was probably too much for one person. Secondly, is we're now looking at our, the results of our previous grant proposal, to see how we, how we scored, if you will, on each of the questions, so that we can build on those areas that we're weak on, as well as we're able to look at all the applications that did receive funding, to see what they did, that we might be able to either apply, or maybe word it differently, because Vermont really is moving forward. We should have, we should be in a very good place to receive this grant, but I think part of that is also, you know, as you said before, the small rural states, next, next week, I'll be with the Rural Chiefs, which are organizations that I helped start at CCSO, so that the federal government is much more aware of the issues that rural states face. And one of them is competitive grants, which is, is a challenge for rural states.
I'm just concerned that the waiver requirements or the RFP would have a poison pill in it in terms of test-based teacher evaluation. in terms of test-based teacher evaluation or the mandatory turnaround strategies or something like that.
It's different for the pre, this is pre-K. So it didn't, the original one did not have any of those conditions. And I think it's really hard at that, when you're talking about, you know, three to four, three, four, or five-year-olds to have those type of conditions. Even though I know there are states, there's at least one state that has already started some kindergarten testing, standardized testing in kindergarten, in some capacity. So, but that's not, this, this race to the top is much purer, if you will, than the original race to the top, which had, I believe, some, you know, there were some things that were trying to be pushed, and by using this amount of money, was going to get there. Which is why we didn't apply for it.
Right. That's what I'd want to be cautious about.
It would be really, and, and, you know, Doug Racine and I and the governor's office are very much encouraged to apply because we think it's going to be a benefit to Vermont, and it will not have those conditions, Bill. And also talking to the governor, governors going to a governor's summit in Chicago when there's an education component, again, to try to get governors from rural states to sort of band together to provide the federal government with some, at least a different perspective that a state like Vermont, New Hampshire, Montana, Idaho have that maybe is different than Chicago or Illinois, Florida, New Jersey.
Are you, are we part of the seven people letter following the Bush strategy, the Chiefs for Change?
No, I actually just sent that to Carol, and she's going to forward it to all of you. No, we're, we're in the opposite, we're opposite of that. And it's, and, and we could have an interesting, and a discussion about how the Chiefs for Change is now, there are now seven current chiefs who are secretaries or commissioners who are part of Chiefs for Change. It's still a small part of our CCSSO organization. But I want, we want to make sure, and I particularly want to make sure that, at least for my remaining time, that I'm a strong voice for those who maybe have a different perspective. The, not the hammer approach to school reform, but the more collaborative, humane approach to school reform. And Stephen, one more thing, and I really meant to say this earlier. And that was a huge thank you to all of you, local boards. But it particularly was the EQS committee, the Teacher and Principal Committee on Teacher Effectiveness. And almost everything else we do. Vermont, probably more than many other states, depends on volunteers. Volunteers like all of you who are driving all around, you know, from all over the state to come together. The EQS folks, prior to that, the Transformation Commission that the, that the state board of education had formed. Prior, when I was on the High Schools on the Move Committee many years ago. More so than other states, we depend on volunteers. And that's a challenge as well as a strength. The challenges for folks who are teaching have to miss, you know, be out of school during the day, whether it's a principal, teacher, it doesn't matter, whatever job you have. And we give them very little in return. We don't pay for mileage for many of these groups. I know that there are a couple of them that we're getting, there are some other monies. And I know money's tight, but when we're asking people to drive up from Bennington, you know, from Brattleboro, from the Northeast Kingdom and other places, it's, it's, I'm just, I'm just very thankful, but also concerned that at some point, people just say, I can't anymore. Other states, it's a little bit more of a balance. And it really goes, could we have more of our meetings after the workday, if you will? So that when there are teachers responding, you know, constantly, I'm sure there's a push and pull for her to be, when it comes to a meeting, I mean, she stopped at school this morning, you know? And there's always that push and pull that everyone faces. So, but something that I think in the future, we might want to discuss. Are there ways to support folks in some manner? In a token, even if it's a token in some way down the road? And that's just, and again, but ultimately, it's a really big thank you for the work that people do that, that provide us with direction and leadership.
And thank you for saying that. Appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to the legislative update. Jill and Bill. And Jill, the first thing we want to know is who really is chair of the-
I think you may be right, I can't tell.
Whoever you want it to be.
No, no.
That's a problem we haven't seen. Yeah, that is one of the problems.
We received a handout, or we got an email yesterday from Jill. So that's, I think, what she's probably going to work from. And Jill, thank you for all your efforts this winter over across the street. I mean, some of us know what it's like to be there.
My pleasure.
I'm sure not every moment was.
Jill Remick, Agency of Education. And I think probably throughout this report, there might be folks from the agency in the audience who are going to pipe in on different sections, because it was definitely a team effort. And as you can see, I mean, even that Tuesday night before they adjourned, there were, there were lots of things flying around. And I think I was probably home asleep before they adjourned. So, the report that I sent out to you folks last night, and I apologize for the lateness of it, I was really holding out to try to get final versions of the bills that we know passed that were education-related. Of course, a lot of them have popped up today while we've been here. So that's why we're trying to reconcile the different versions of H-521 to see who the chair is on that board. But in any event, once the final, final versions are posted, we will certainly send you folks a more thorough legislative update with very specific deadlines and responsibilities. What I tried to do in this document was just try to do a roundup so we could go through the major, the major pieces that directly impacted the board and the agency. 521, H-521, which doesn't have an act number yet, it hasn't been signed, and there isn't a final, final version yet, was the miscellaneous education bill. You probably remember months ago, we came to you folks with a few various things we wanted to ask for or propose. And it got all kinds of things tacked on to it, changed, and so on. And so in the end, there were several different sections that addressed several different topics. I'm happy to go through all of them. The one that we've already been talking about today is about the closure of a public school with the intention of reopening very soon after as an independent school to serve essentially the same student population. After much discussion, it does appear that that ended up being a study that includes both the chair of the state board and the secretary of education. And depending on which version online you look at, one or the other is the chair. The, the version that was passed by House and Senate has the secretary as the chair, and convening that by July. So we'll have to-
By 15th?
July 1. So by the time we come back to the board at the end of June, we will have, we will need to have already set up that meeting. So as soon as we get the final word on that. And that was obviously something that the board was paying a lot of attention to because these come before you folks. And there was, there was one in particular that I know you folks had a lot of conversations about. And I think that regardless of the outcome of the study, there may very well be recommendations back to the board as to state board rule on how to handle that. Would you like me to just go through the pieces quickly?
Just hit the highlights at this hour, yeah.
Okay.
Certainly if members of the board have questions, you can chime in and ask Jill, or-
What happened with childcare unionization, in or out?
Out. It was taken off. It did not survive.
Yes.
I would, it was found not germane, it was deemed not germane to be in the miscellaneous ed bill. I would expect that to come back next year, again.
I hope so.
I'm glad you brought that up. Before I forget, there are a couple other things that received a lot of attention that impact you folks and the agency that did not pass, but we certainly expect them to come back. One of which, amazingly enough, is H-524, which was the technical corrections bill that was simply changing the words commissioner to secretary and so on. It was supposed to be really innocuous, and it was supposed to be, it did not pass.
So all those cards we got?
So-
So I would expect that to definitely come back and pass next year.
And why did it not pass? There are other things tacked on?
Yes. That diverted them to committees, and then time ran out, and there it sat. Also, H-
So the, the-
Shenanigans.
We still have deputy commissioners, then?
Yes.
As opposed to deputy secretaries?
That's correct.
Also-
So it's all because you're an interim?
Right.
Pointed by the board?
Yes.
It's still in there.
Whoa, 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 whoa. My per diem just went up.
And we can appoint as many as we want to.
Right. I'm sorry, Jill.
Not at all. So a few of the pieces in H-521 were related to some of the pieces that Vaughn had mentioned earlier, Act 153. Some things have popped up since that passed that needed to get updated. Let's see, there was the study. Oh, also, another bill that just ran out of time, but I would expect to come back, is H-270, which was the preschool expansion of the public preschool program. I would expect that to come back next session. Let's see, so number 11, we've already discussed on page two. Sorry, forgive me, I don't have page numbers on here. But number 11, under the miscellaneous ed bill, was the study that we've just talked about. 12 was a request for a report from the secretary on teacher advisory groups. Let's see. Another major one that I think I will ask if Vaughn has more detail he'd like to share with you folks. Number 16, you might remember that there was a special education employees at the SU level working group. And they had several legislative proposals, and one of, and those did make it through on H-521. And Vaughn was on that group and coordinated that effort, if you want to do a brief-
Didn't coordinate the effort.
Brief.
We were, we were a committee of complete equals with facilitator. First, Mr. Chairman, it's impossible to thank Jill enough for what she did this, this past session. It was a crowded session for education, somewhat disorganized. I can remember leaving the Bill Talbot's Monday morning staff meeting out in our exile location and having this urgent message from Jill that something having to do with the bill, without any warning, was being brought up. So I drove in. A call had gone out to Nicole and to Jeff Francis, and they arrived about the same time I did, and we rushed into the room. Such things were happening all the time, and Jill had to be able to represent the department across finance, across programs, across anything, and she was fabulous. The other thing, I, everything that the secretary said about people giving applies to the people who were on, are on the special education working group. In fact, we were not able even to reimburse their mileage. So you add principals, upper-principal business managers, special ed administrators being reimbursed out of their SU budgets, which I think is kind of sad, but it was the way it was set up. We tried to operate under consensus, and for the most part, we achieved it. I think the biggest thing we learned was that the movement of people is complicated, and given labor contracts take, takes a great deal of time. One recommendation that applied, was universally supported by everyone on the, the working group, was a fairly large-scale revision of the way the move upward would work. I don't know if you, there's no reason you would remember, but last year, the House committee moved the deadline out to 2015. Senate moved it in one year to 2014, it had been 2013. There was also a very peculiar bottleneck provision that said before you could move anyone up, you had to have an agreement on seniority, RIFs, and something else that escapes me. But the peculiarity of that is that you had to create this unit outside any bargaining structure because there wasn't one yet. And Joel Cook and Nicole Mace did this job of changing it. And they talked about it being open-ended, you needed the full agreement before you went up. My heart started to pound, and then I was surprised that the business managers in the group actually agreed with it. And they had a couple of very, very good reasons. One of them being that, logistically, the people in both the NEA and in the work for supervisor unions didn't have enough people to accomplish the task. Not only did you need bargaining agreements, but you needed to construct bargaining units.
Too broad.
So now what, now what you need to do is get your full agreement. And if it isn't in place by July 1, 2015, you report to the commissioner or the secretary. If it appears not to, if people appear to be dragging their feet, one presumes the legislature will act. All licensed educators will move up. The most, the one area in which we were not able to achieve unanimity was the handling of power professionals. And Joel Cook in Vermont NEA felt he couldn't go along with that piece. But the remainder of the committee came to the conclusion that there was so much difference in the way SUs used power educators, variance in the way they were used district by district, and sometimes even day by day, week by week, that if we could give SUs the right to arrange that the way they wanted, if anyone moves up, they have a full range of protections that a power educator, that a licensed teacher would. Otherwise, they have the status quo. And that's what we recommended.
Thank you. Jill, so lead us through this, the rest of this-
And just to say, that was not what Vaughn just described, was not an easy process to get where they were.
I understand, I understand. I didn't mean to cut you off, Vaughn.
No, 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 I just wanted to also make a point, that was a tough committee.
That's another year.
538, anything you want to point out there?
Sure, 538 was the education funding bill that was getting a lot of attention and work at the, in the last days of the session. I think I summarized it pretty succinctly here. Bill could correct me if I'm wrong. Moving on. It asks the agency to collect data and report out on staff, student, student to staff ratios. A lot of that we do already. It also changes the excess spending threshold percentages, as you can see on the third page of my report. And changes the way that tuition undercharge and overcharge is arranged between districts and independent schools that are accepting students, something like that.
High schools who have tuition, I mean, is it different?
Yes, yep.
And staff ratios, I think it's going to be more complicated than it looks on its face.
Yep.
I was just even thinking, like, so what are my numbers? If I share student, yeah, so if I share students, so I mean-
You want to answer?
Yeah, like, you can compare, you can make it as low or as high as you want, depending on your definition. What are those ratios? S4 on the third page of the report was, it started out being just a concussion bill, which in and of itself, we weren't necessarily thinking that was necessary. Only last year, they passed some pretty significant student-athlete concussion prevention legislation. And folks in our agency did a lot of work on that with the health department already. So that has, that has been expanded quite a bit. And also, two other bills that were student and school health-related were added on to S4. So S4 actually has quite a bit of work in it for the agency and the board. You'll see on the bottom of that third page, the piece about the epinephrine auto-injectors. Originally, that had called for state board rulemaking about managing students with life-threatening allergies. We got them to at least change that to policies in consultation with the health department. There's a lot of, that work has already been done. There's school nurse manuals. The health department has all kinds of guidance about this anyway. Just as I should add, regarding concussion, the health department and the Traumatic Brain Injury Association. So a lot of the work is done, but this asks the board and the agency to, to provide that information. It also asks the secretary to collect from each school and analyze all incidents of life-threatening allergic reactions, which is, has a few concerns if you're not only HIPAA-
Analyze what?
Analyze every life-threatening allergic reaction incident in a school.
If you need to use an epineph- an epineph- is that what they're, is that how they're-
Right. So, but the health department actually noted that all EMS collect that kind of data anyway. So it's not appropriate necessarily to ask the state board or the agency of education to do so, but that information might be available to them in another way. The last section was about cataloging and making recommendations for school-based mental health services for students. So a lot of work in that one, Bill.
So we, we need to take, pay attention to that, though, that we need to look at adopting rules, the board does?
Well, we, we've gotten them to change that to policies at the last, in conference committee, they changed it to policies. So the health department is, is anxious to provide a lot of what they already have there anyway. And so whether it's them or us, we bring that to you folks.
This talks about the state board, uh-
Yes, and I apologize again. This is the language, the latest language that was on there, but I was in the conference committee when they made that change, so I do know.
The challenge for us, though, is, I mean, if you're, if you're a school board, you have policy, you have a certain thing you want, you go- So for us, policy- have policy, you have a certain thing you want, and so for us, policy is a little bit different than it would be for a board member. So, there's clarification as well that we would need as to what does it mean, a rule is very clear, a policy?
A policy.
And, and how is it implemented? Is it just a decision the board makes, and that's a policy, versus a school board that has to go through first reading, and then there's a 30-day wait and a second reading? So, there's some questions there that we have...
I mean, when they, so, state board used to supervise us, they made a policy that would be a policy for us, but now they're just the state board by themselves, they make a policy, it's a policy for them to live by. I don't think anybody else lives by it.
Yeah. So, there's a question, there's some clarification that may be down with the other...
And like I said, the health department is anxious to help with that, so I think that they, they probably have 90% of that worked on already.
And we have a really good working relationship with the health department.
Yep. That's who I talked on the phone with earlier today about this very thing.
S-14?
Yep. So, S-11 is pretty self-explanatory. S-14 was about agency fee, but tacked on a requirement for the secretary of education...
Have a conversation.
About merit pay.
Did the agency fee pass?
Yes.
So...
Yes.
That's just what it sounds like.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, S-1...
S-130 is the flexible pathways. We talked about that a bit earlier when we were talking about EQS.
Right.
And there, I, I think there will be a bill signing, and I'm sure you folks will be invited to. It's pretty exciting. It's got a lot of, a lot of work in there for the agency and for schools, but the way that we categorized it the other day on the, on the public access show is this really is a pretty huge commitment. Everyone sort of had some skin in the game, the, the state colleges, the independent colleges, VSAC, high schools, school boards, principals, everybody, everybody participated in the process of developing this legislation, and everybody is making a commitment to, to provide that experience for kids, so we're pretty proud of that. And, and on that note, this was the first legislative session that we worked with the governor's office under, under the new structure of a secretary and the state board and the agency, and this is a great example of how that really worked very well. We worked really closely with them. I hope that they were happy with our responsiveness, so that was a success. H-530...
No, along, as long as you reminded me, I mean, I think one of the things this board ought to acknowledge is, you know, this was a fairly substantial historical change last year, when, when the department became an agency and, and the board was, was, was just doing policy issues and not, not running the agency slash department. And so, since then, there's been a year, and the legislature's been in session, and as far as I know, there were no changes in Title 16 that, that changed any of that scheme between the agency and, and the board. And I think, I think that's a victory, and I think, you know, it's to everyone's credit and, and is a good signal that, you know, that this board is, is going to be left to, you know, to, to take on the responsibility that we, that we got last year.
You're optimistic.
Well, I know that there's a, there's a young man down in Bennington that doesn't agree with me, but, you know, as far as I know, he's the only one.
H... Shall I continue? H-530, just, it's, it's really a, a large appropriation bill, there's a lot to it, but I just pulled out a few key pieces. The state auditor is going to study the idea of a study about special education funding, and will be making a recommendation in September to the joint fiscal committee, so we'll keep an eye on that. Apparently, Section E-235, the E-911 board is a, is a standard piece, but basically, it just directs the E-911 board to consult with the secretary of education, basically about ensuring that when, for example, a phone call was made from, say, this room, that emergency personnel would know where the phone call was coming from.
Which, by the way, sometime the first or second week of June, they're going to be, going to every school in the state and calling from every room that has a phone to see if that school is connected, so when it reaches the 911, does it say, "CBU High School Library, Room 12," whatever it is. They can't do it all at once, it's going to be staggered over a period of time between June and first, so that they don't flood the 911. But just so if you hear about this, that's something that's going to be going on that has nothing to do with education, it's really public safety, but you, as board members, will hear about it, right?
But also, tacked on to H-530 was the, the provision for reduced, students who qualify for reduced lunch to get lunch for free, so that did pass. So, even though the separate bills that were calling for that didn't make it through, it was in the budget, and that did go through. The language was basically taken from those bills, so that's another, another victory for...
And it's years of trying to have this discussion, that, again, having the governor's voice behind it and having it in our budget key, without that voice, we would have continued, I think, to try. Flexible pathways, same thing.
Bill, anything you want to add?
Um, couple of things. The spared, the special, the state auditors report on special ed, I'd like to see that when it comes out, and I'd say, "Good luck, God bless."
Good luck.
Because that is a tough, complex area that doesn't lend itself to easy analysis. I'd be very surprised if he was able to pull this off in September.
And Bill, you know, that, the reason, I, I mean, I, I say, "Good luck" as well, but I think there's a perception that special ed is driving up cost.
Yeah.
You know, it's a cost that we have to...
And it has grown.
Has grown.
There's no question about it.
But part of it is, it's, it's a statutory, it's a federal...
We have to pay for it.
And, yeah, so I, so I think that, I, I do want to, I think for the most part, let most people, you know, that in most places, special education is handled as efficiently as possible. It's a big number when you look at it statewide, and sometimes if one particular district has a bump because of a small district, it really looks like a bum-bump. But I don't want people to think that special education is driving up the cost of education in Vermont, when there are other factors. So, it'll be good to have this report that hopefully will, will...
I'll be very curious to see what it says.
Yeah.
On merit pay, I have no idea what the genesis of that particular thing was, but there is a research literature on this that pretty well answers the question.
And all they're asking for is a conversation. I've had like half a dozen conversations in the past week about it, so I think I'm not only...
Done?
Done, I'm done, plus.
Cross it off.
Cross it off. Right, and then just have another one.
Mark, did you have your hand...
Yeah, I just had a clarifying question on S-14. When it refers to teacher, school administrators, municipal employees, is that municipal employees' support staff?
It is. Anyone who's not in a license falls under municipal retirement system, municipal system rather. Right, Bill?
Yeah.
There are individual places that have, Mr. Secretary, for example, Rutland has a pension system for its municipal employees in the part of it, but yes.
Okay, yeah. In lieu of municipal, they have their own.
Yes, sir.
Anything else on the legislative report? Okay?
My thanks to Jill, along with everybody else's. It was a very unusual session.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jill.
Yeah, Armando has one other announcement here.
And it's brief. I want to, first of all, Carol King, everybody knows who Carol King is, so camera, Carol King.[1390.54][1390.54](laughter) Okay? Hey, you know, you embarrass us all the time, so I might as well take that. But, but seriously, Carol was nominated by the agency and was selected as our Vermont Public Service Award winner for service to the state and recognition of all the work that she's done for, not just for the board, but for us, for me personally. She is our history book of, of information, so I wanted to make a point of recognizing Carol, thanking her for her, like...[1422.12][1422.12](applause) And make it public, so...
We went to lunch.
And we went to lunch.
Good. You paid.
We all paid. We all paid.
Speaking of paying...
No, no purchasing cuts.
Mr. Talbot, speaking of paying, we're on the item number N, monthly expenditures.
Now, for the exciting part of the agenda. So, what you have is the expenditure report as of the end of April, and it shows that you have $5,389.92 remaining to spend for this meeting and your last meeting, but the good news is, the last meeting is at the end of June, and we won't pay for it until July. The state, the state is on a cash system, the beauty of the cash system is, doesn't get recorded until you pay the bill, so...
We should end the fiscal year in...
I think you gotta just make it just right, just like you wanted it, to write down, this meeting will be a little less expensive, lunch was cheaper, I don't think we're paying for the room. So, this was a good meeting from, from my perspect, from a fiscal perspective, and...
You just need to pre...
So, and, and one of the reasons it's tight is because last year's meeting, the, the June meeting, was paid for this year, so it's already reflected in it, so it all works out, and I think you're going to be just where you need to be. Let's end this report.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions on the financial report?
No.
In your packet, there was a update from Carol on where we stood with our, our various priorities. And maybe I should explain that to the newer board members. One of the things this board initiated when I became chair is, we went through a process to identify what, what our board priorities were, and that's what this list is, and I think if you, I'm not going to go through it item by item, but you'll see that we, we paid attention to it and we, we accomplished a lot, a lot of it. And I'm going to suggest to you in a moment, when we start talking about our, our June retreat, and we start thinking about what our 2014 priorities are, so I thought this might be helpful in knowing where we are. What I'd like to do is take a brief recess, actually adjourn, and take a brief recess... Oh, wait a minute, we've got one more.
Yes.
You, you want the written, the litigation update after we adjourn, is that...
It can be taken as a written report without comment, or it could give me six seconds to comment, as you wish.
I think in the interest of time, unless anyone has any questions, Mark, I didn't see anything in there that took... Is there anything you want to discuss?
Can I just say one thing?
Of course.
The volume, like, the volume of our legal work, I call it litigation, but it's, it's not fundamentally court work, it's mostly administrative hearings, is about steady, but we have had a marked absence of actual hearings. I credit that to the mediation system that we have in place, I think it works better all the time. Quality of our mediators is, is high. Our ability to intervene early is being refined, and that does two things, both of all, it saves money, but more importantly, it saves time, and most importantly, it saves relationships, because much of the stuff that we adjudicate are disputes between school districts and parents and kids, and that's a long-term relationship. And as little dispute amongst those parties as we can have is better for all concerned. So, I just want to say thank you to, openly thank you to our mediators and to all of the administrative staff at the agency and outside the agency and our contracted hearing officers who make this successful. If there's one thing I look back in over seven years during my time with the agency with a high degree of pride, it would be that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Bill?
One very quick thing, and I'll let Bonnie have the floor. Global best practices on the State Board of Education priorities, number five, either I've forgotten or I don't know what that is. Can somebody give me a link or something?
That's the self-assessment that's internationally benchmarked in our work with the New England Secondary School Consortium for effective schools.
Can you send me a link, or can we email?
Absolutely, we have it on a PDF.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Bonnie?
Well, I'm, I'm, are we taking a break?
I was going to take a short break.
Okay, 'cause I actually have to leave, so I want to do my piece now.
Okay.
Just because...
All right, well, let me, let's, let's, let's do a, a motion to adjourn, and then we will start the process of setting ourselves up for the board retreat, and then we're going to take a brief recess.
I'll make the motion, because I'm now a board member and I can't even, I can't vote, but I want to thank Laura before we, before we leave.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That, that was really the point of this, is...
Yes.
Laura, you've been great, thank you very much.
And a great hostess today.
And a great hostess, enjoyed having you and your perspective, so thank you, and it's great to get you in Vermont.
But we will, well, we're going to see you in June?
Will you be in...
I'm not sure, because I thought it was, I got the dates key here.
Yeah, I did too.[1767.83]